Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here on this beautiful, sunshiny day. It is 6:00 PM and I will call to order the joint meeting of the URA and MIRAC. And to get us going, I would like to call on our Community Development Director Heather Richards to introduce our topic today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Committee members. So tonight, we're having a joint work session to talk about our Northwest Rubber site and the redevelopment project that's being planned for that. What I want to do is first introduce Chris Sahas and Andrew Oliver, who are from Leland Consulting. They are helping us with this project. And so tonight, we're going to tag-team it and sort of bring you through the history of the project itself, where we're at at this point in time, and the next steps. I like to think of this as a project that is about, we went after and controlled the property. We want to send out a request for qualifications to find a developer to partner with to develop the property and redevelop it. But really, it's about building something transformative for both the neighborhood and for McMinnville. It's a great opportunity for us and I think the first project of this kind for this community in terms of controlling a site and really having a thoughtful and intentional discussion about how we want to see that site redeveloped. We're going to talk about the goals for the project. So I'll go through the history and the description of the project and the goals, and then I'm going to hand it over to our consultant team to talk about public-private partnerships. They specialize in that. And also specifics that we're putting together for the request for qualifications. And then we want to open it up for questions and answers. We're in the process of developing the RFQ right now, and so we have some of those decision-making milestones that we're bringing to you, and then we wanted to get your comments. So we are talking about the Northwest Rubber redevelopment site. It's in the Northeast Gateway District, and this is really about leveraging now a publicly-owned property for a public-private development partnership. It sets the stage for the next chapter of this particular area and neighborhood by respecting both the past, honoring the present, and building the future in an equitable and just manner. I think it's interesting to note, this is a design from the Northeast Gateway Plan, and you'll see in that, I don't know if you can see my cursor?
A little bit.
Oh, a little bit. You'll see in that, that it actually highlights the site that we're talking about today. This site was identified as an opportunity site when going through the process of looking at this area as a redevelopment area for the community. This is our historic industrial area for McMinnville. When McMinnville was first platted, this was considered on the outskirts of town, and it was formed as the industrial area during the late 1800s. It was formed around the railroad itself, and then there was the county courthouse and the Communities Business Center to the south, Third Street. It's bounded to the west by an active freight railroad and to the east by a vehicular freight arterial, Lafayette Avenue. Alpine Avenue is sort of the spine of this area, and it's partially paved. We did an improvement project several years ago. It travels north and south through the neighborhood. The properties in the neighborhood are a mix of light industrial properties, warehousing, storage facilities, some craft industrial, some older residential housing, and then some emerging commercial entrepreneurs. In terms of the project history, this started almost 20 years ago, actually, by Kelly McDonald and his team, when they looked at, as a development team, investing in the rehab of the old grain station and rehabbing it into a multipurpose, commercial development, supporting local businesses. This started the discussion in McMinnville of, does this industrial area still serve the community as an industrial area now that it is now in the city center? Or should it move into a different type of service for this community moving forward as the industrial area has relocated to the eastern edge of the community? And that set the stage for the Northeast Gateway District revitalization discussion. A plan came out of that in 2013. That plan looked at mixed-use employment in this area, mixed-use residential, and then mixed-use commercial. So it's really looking at higher-density development and revitalizing this area from industrial into sort of a high-density residential and commercial neighborhood. The planning process took place from 2010 to 2013, involved a lot of community engagement. We then put together a tool to fund the plan, which is the Urban Renewal Plan that was adopted in 2013. And then we put together a structure to implement the plan, which is the McMinnville Urban Renewal Advisory Committee, who were established in 2014 and served the city in its role as the urban renewal agency since then. In terms of this particular property being a catalytic project, it was identified, as I said, as a priority site during that planning process. And so the city's been looking at it since the plan was put together. However, it was occupied by Ultimate RB for many years, a business employing approximately 50 people, more or less, at different times during their business mix. And we wanted to support that business as much as we can, could, recognizing that the site was landlocked, and as their needs grew, they may need to leave the site. In 2023, the site was actually purchased by Northwest Rubber. We then, shortly after that purchase, learned that they purchased it to close it, and they were looking to potentially surplus the property. So we reached out to Northwest Rubber executives and said, "The city's interested. We're interested in working with you on purchasing the property. It's part of our redevelopment plan. We'd like to have that conversation before you actually actively market it." And so we engaged in those conversations, developed a purchase-and-sale agreement that both parties mutually agreed to, and purchased the property in October 2023. Since the purchase of the property, we've also conducted a Phase 1 and Phase 2 environmental assessment. We did that utilizing funds from the city, and we have since applied for a grant that has helped pay back the funds utilized for those two evaluations. And then we also worked with the owner that we purchased it from to remove all the equipment from the site, except for power, fire suppression, and security. So right now, it's, the buildings still remain on-site, but everything else has been removed, including a big bagless, Counselor Gary, help me with that?
Bag house.
Yes, thank you. Bag house. That was a huge investment and improvement on the site that had been done about a year previous to the city purchasing it. It would have cost about $150,000 to transport it off the site to another site outside of the city. We eventually learned that there was another manufacturing, new manufacturing business in McMinnville that needed the same type of equipment, and so we matched them up with Northwest Rubber and were able to successfully transfer that equipment to the new manufacturing development here in town. Win-win-win for all. So where we're at in terms of our project's scope of work, we secured the property, we did the environmental assessment. We also put together a subcommittee. The subcommittee is comprised of people from the McMinnville Urban Renewal Advisory Committee, the mayor, the city manager, and staff. And the subcommittee met and meets continually and talked about what to, how to move this site forward in the way that we wanted to, that was the best stewardship for McMinnville. And based on those discussions, we visited with the City of Independence, who has done many projects like this. And from that discussion with the City of Independence, we made a decision that we needed to bring in a consultant to help us through the process. And then we hired Leland Consulting to help the subcommittee draft an RFQ. At the same time, Mayor Drapkin applied for and successfully was selected to be one of seven mayors chosen nationwide for a fellowship with Harvard's Mayor's Institute on City Design. And that, Mayor Drapkin applied for it based on this project. So bringing this project to that institute for, on city design, to review the project and help us develop the RFQ in such a way that it was achieving what the city wanted to achieve with this project. And where we're at now is we are in the process of drafting that RFQ. We hope to host a developer tour to generate interest, and we have gotten a lot of interest from developers thus far. We probably have about a dozen now that have told us they're interested and want to receive the RFQ, and we're in discussions with them over the next couple of weeks to sort of talk about what we want to achieve there and see what would be barriers for developers in terms of responding to that request for qualifications. Then we're going to publish the RFQ, and we'll go through a process after that of selecting a developer. The RFQ is a request for qualification, so it's not a request for proposals. We're looking for the developer that matches the city's vision and our shared principles, and then we'll talk about what the development project will be after choosing that developer. We hope, we expect that developer to also do some community engagement in terms of what the community wants to see happen on this site. And through that process, we'll establish design principles and negotiate development agreement. Leland Consulting will lead you through the more specifics regarding that process. So the project site itself, it is the Northwest Rubber redevelopment site. They're off of Alpine Avenue, bounded by Eighth Street and 10th Avenue. It's about three and a half acres. It's an industrial site, and as I said, it was identified as a catalyst opportunity site. The picture on the left there shows what it looks like today with all the equipment removed from it and the ducting and pipe work. This is a photo collage of the existing site conditions. You'll notice that there is a loading dock there. There's also a railroad spur that connects into this site as well. So it's two legal parcels. It's vacant at this time. Its previous use has been a history of heavy industrial use. The warehouse itself is about 50,000 square feet, with initially built in 1970 with additions up through 2000. It also has a separate building on the site, which is a 4,000-square-foot office. It's adjacent to the active railroad with the spur. It's two blocks from that freight arterial, and it has all utilities serving the site. It's 97% of the site is impervious, and we've done the Phase 1 and Phase 2. The Phase 2 showed a little bit of contamination in soils that are about 10 to 12 feet down, so if they are excavated, they will need to be removed and stored at a site for hazardous soils. We are in the process of a discussion for a contaminated media management plan with DEQ for the site. And then we did do a hazardous buildings material survey in 2023 as well, and no hazardous materials were identified in the buildings. The site history, it was originally a Nestle milk condensary and was originally built in 1908. It was operated by Nestle through 1953. Then it transformed into a lumberyard up through the 80s, and since the 80s, it's been a rubber manufacturing plant. We looked at the sandboard maps, and what I thought was interesting about the sandboard maps and wanted to share with you is actually this particular development, this site, is what spurred the development around the area there in terms of this northeast gateway. This site was the first site to develop off the railroad in that area. The railroad came in in 1889, and then the sandboard maps in 1912 show this condensary. And it was only in 1928 we start to see dwellings built around it. However, oftentimes, we just talk about the white settlement of our community when we're talking about the history, and we want to remind everyone that this is actually originally Native American land and the confetti, from the Confederate tribes of the Grand Round Community of Oregon. And also that the Baker Street, as it runs through our community, used to be a Native American trail running north and south, so we believe there's a strong Native American history in this area as well. And then doing some further research, we found that there was, there in our, in our history with our Chinese settlement here in McMinnville, that we believe there was also input from the Chinese laborers, both on the railroad and potentially in the manufacturing area. This comprehensive plan shows you how it was originally the industrial area for the city center, so blue is industrial on our comprehensive plan, red is commercial, and yellow is residential. The red area to the south is our downtown area. But you can see from the larger map that the industrial really has shifted to the east for our community. We've seen a lot of emerging commercial entrepreneurs in this area, both those that were there before the Urban Renewal District was put in place and others that have come in partnership with the Urban Renewal Program. And the city also invested in the improvement project on Alpine Avenue to sort of set the stage for redevelopment, revitalization in this area. This is an example of the railroad as it goes by the site, and also 10th Avenue, which is an unimproved street adjacent to the site. And then there's housing directly in the neighborhood itself that is both, serves our low- and moderate-income households, and then there's housing right across the railroad as well, which is more of a historic stock of housing. Recently, we've seen public art installed in this neighborhood, as well as partnerships with some nonprofits who are participating in the revitalization for this area, including Zero Waste and our garden club. We still have a mixture of warehousing and storage with Barbed Wire and Alpine Avenue, so it's, it's, this is an emerging neighborhood that's in transition, and, and so the site will be, any development on the site will be reflecting that. As part of the mayor's program with the Harvard Institute on City Design, one of our homework pieces was to really do a deep dive into the data that inform this site. And as we were putting that together, I wanted to share some of the information that came out of that, because it was, it was an interesting exercise for our team to go through that process, and it really helped us think more about this site in terms of all the different layers of opportunity associated with it. To do the data review, since we're a smaller city, we're somewhat limited in the data available to us, but we were able to look at a census block group in terms of accessing as much data as we could, and so we chose to do the Census Track 308.01 block group, too. What that is, that includes the Northeast Gateway District and then the residential neighborhood that's west of the tracks from there. As you know, we are severely rent burdened city, meaning that 50% of our renters, meaning that of 25% of our renters of their household monthly income, 50% goes towards housing, which is a very vulnerable state. And then about 54% of our renters, over 30% of their household income goes towards housing. So we, our rental community is in a, is in an unaffordable situation when it comes to the rental market in our community. This neighborhood reflects that same issue that's occurring, and what we did was we looked at the city itself and compared it to the neighborhood. I'm not going to go through all the statistics. We provided you with this PowerPoint so that you have the data as you want to look at it, going through it. But this is, this neighborhood has lower incomes than the rest of the city. The household values are a little bit lower than the rest of the city as well. The age is lower than the rest of the city. And then you will see there is a slightly higher proportionality of race and ethnicity groups in this neighborhood. In terms of access to the schools, what we looked at was the schools that were within walking distance of this neighborhood. McMinnville High School and Patton Middle School are both within close proximity, but there is not an elementary school that is in close proximity to this neighborhood. And then in terms of educational attainment, the households in this neighborhood had lesser educational attainment than the average through the rest of the city, especially in the bachelor's degree or higher. For public open spaces, what we learned was there isn't a lot of it in this neighborhood in terms of access to public open spaces and public green spaces and parks. This is a, we highlighted the Census Block Group tract relative to our parks' master planning process that we just went through in terms of park services area, and we do not have a park that's within a, within this service area. We looked at environmental conditions, and this, this neighborhood is actually considered disadvantaged for a variety of different reasons in terms of both income and high school education and attainment. And then we looked at environmental conditions. So this was an interesting statistic. I won't go through all of it, but what it does show is that there's exposure to more environmental hazards in this neighborhood than the rest of the city. And we looked at health statistics as well for this neighborhood versus Yam Hill County, and those are tracking fairly similarly. The neighborhood is a little bit higher on some of the behavioral health conditions. And interestingly, we looked at households with one or more disabilities. This is census data, so it's self-identifying, and they're tracking fairly similarly between the city and this neighborhood, but it is a fairly high percentage of our community identifies as having one or more disabilities. The national norm is somewhere in the 20% to 25%. In our, in our community, it's averaging anywhere between 35% and 40%. And then we did a scrub on the infrastructure, and I won't go through that for you, but the, the utilities are all in this area, can support the redevelopment of this site. We did identify one wastewater pinch point that we need to address that's not in this neighborhood, but it's downstream of this neighborhood to do, to be able to do a higher-density development. And after we identified that, we have been working on what it will take to relieve that pinch point and the funding that it will take to relieve that pinch point, and we have applied for federal funding for, to help us with that. So we went through also doing a strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threat analysis. We did it from two perspectives, so the traditional perspective of, of sort of the locational, geographical, logistical strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And then we also did it through the, through the lens of justice. So what are the strengths and assets and opportunities related to ensuring justice in our community and equity, and then what are the opportunities and threats associated with that? So I'm not going to go through those in detail, but we did provide that data for you as well. And we feel that this, this led into our sort of principles and goals for this project, which is that we want to ensure that we are doing a variety of things. One, responding to the authenticity of our community. So we want to, since we have control of the site and we can talk and find a developer to match what we would want to achieve there, we want to ensure that we're doing something that is reflective of McMinnville and that serves McMinnville. So we want to be able to make sure we're not displacing residents in terms of bringing in housing that does not serve our residential needs across the board, so a mixture of housing serving a diverse community. We also want the design to reflect the history of this area, so not only the history, the industrial history of this area, but also the reflection of the Native American history of this area, as well as the Chinese history. We want to celebrate those community layers that we don't often recognize fully, so that's that data scrub, what we learned about the community and the demographics in this neighborhood. And we want to involve the community in the project. People, get people involved in what this final project looks like and feels like and interacts with the community. Our opportunity is we've set the table to partner with a developer on a transformative project in this district. We have the vision through the planning process. We have the code that reflects that vision with an overlay district, so that's already been put in place. We have a funding tool for public improvements, and we've already funded the street improvements to sort of set the stage, and we've done the analysis for the utility improvements that need to take place. And since we control the project, we can make it transformative. So I shared a little bit about the transformation relative to what the business plan looks for, looks like for the project, so how it's programmed and who it, who it responds to. But the other way that this can be transformative for us is it can really sort of set the stage for a process that we use as we move forward a city project that is inclusive, so looking at the full community and how to, how to get people involved in the discussion that aren't typically involved in the discussion. Data-informed, make sure that we're making decisions that are data-informed and responsive, make sure we're making decisions that are responding to our community's needs both now and in the future. That's why, as we put together the request for qualifications, it's important to us that we're really thoughtful and intentional about the goals that will be in that RFQ and the principles that we have as a city in terms of what we want to achieve here, because it, we had a lot of discussion about doing a request for proposal or an RFQ, and landed on the RFQ because we want to make sure we're choosing the right developer to be a partner with the city in terms of building this project. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Leland Consulting to lead you through public-private development partnerships and the RFQ itself.
Thank you, Heather. Good evening, everybody. My name is Chris Sahas. I'm principal at Leland Consulting Group. We are real estate advisors and urban planners. We're based in Portland, been around since 1989. I was actually on the consulting team that helped create the Northeast Gateway Plan 12 or so years ago, so it's exciting to come back and see the transformation that's already taken place in the neighborhood. Andrew and I are going to walk you through a presentation that's in two parts. The first part, I'll lead you through, which is about public-private partnerships and the process that you're embarking on with this redevelopment. And then Andrew will talk a little bit more in detail about the draft RFQ that I believe has been shared with you, that we're crafting and ultimately will be releasing at the beginning in mid-July.
We haven't shared that.
Oh, you haven't shared it yet? We'll be getting, we'll talk you about key points to it.
Yeah.
So the process that you're embarking on with a public-private partnership starts with, why do that? You know, you could just simply surplus the land and sell it. Obviously, you bought it with some intentions in mind, and the reason cities and public agencies get involved in partnerships like this is because you're trying to do something that the market wouldn't do on its own. You're trying to achieve public outcomes, community objectives, overcome barriers that, you know, there may be market feasible uses on the site, but for the uses that the community wants, there might be financial or regulatory or other kinds of barriers that make it something the market would not do on its own. And so that's why cities get involved, and that's why you acquired this property, is because you have some, you have a vision and you want to control your own destiny. In a public-private partnership, each side brings something to the table. Private developers who are getting involved in a public-private partnership. Not every private developer is, you know, well-suited for this kind of environment, but they are looking for partners, cities, who have strong political will, who know what they want and are clear and can articulate it, can bring financial resources to the table, particularly if it's a project that is not market feasible or has additional barriers to overcome. And what's really important is a clear vision. So the fact that there is a Northeast Gateway Plan, the fact that the MIRAC committee has been meeting and talking about this property and crafting a vision through criteria that we will talk about, those are all really important things that tells a developer, hey, if I come to the table, the city knows what they want, and they're going to be consistent with me throughout the process. Likewise, on the flip side, you're looking for developers who are a good fit for kind of the transparent, open-book, public-private partnership. So in particular, you're looking for developers who have experience with that and are comfortable with that. There will be a lot of scrutiny involved, a lot of public participation involved, and you want developers who know what they're getting into, essentially. They need to come with financial strength. Again, this is a RFQ, not an RFP, so they're not necessarily coming with their financing lined up, but you want to know from their experience of projects they've done before that they can pull it together. They've got, they've got partnerships, they've got resources, they've got relationships. And because you're picking them based on the track record of their prior experience, references are really, really important. When you get your responses back, you will want to call those references, look them up, maybe even make site visits to the projects that they include, and see how they've performed and functioned over, over time. So a little bit more about why are we doing this RFP and not, or RFQ instead of an RFP? So the main difference is an RFP, a request for proposals, is sort of a binding, they're putting a price to it. They have come forward with a design. We're going to build an apartment building with X number of units, and based on our analysis, we can afford to pay you this dollar amount. What tends to happen in those kinds of proposal processes is a developer is responding with very little information and very little time to really do due diligence, and so it tends to become a beauty contest. They are telling you what you want to hear so that they can win the project, and then once they win the project, they get into, they really start to sharpen their pencil, and often what happens is the ultimate project that survives the negotiation and design process doesn't look much like what was originally proposed. doesn't look much like what was originally proposed. So an RFQ, and the second thing is to respond to an RFP, a developer has to hire an architect, has to do designs, has to do a lot of feasibility work that costs tens, if not $100,000 or more. And that is a big deterrent to getting them to respond in the first place. An RFQ, on the other hand, the focus is finding the partner that you're going to sort of co-design and develop the project together with. So you're primarily looking for their track record of built projects and public-private partnerships, the quality of those projects, the quality of their team. You will be, we will be asking the developments to be bringing their team. Show us your general contractor, who is your architect, who is your engineer? And you can vet their qualifications as well. And look for a track record of teaming and partnering so that you know that it's a, it's a group that knows how to work well together and knows how to work well with cities together. Well, you won't be asking for a full financial proposal. It's totally appropriate to ask for some banking references to, knowing that they, you know, maybe they have a pension fund or they have a bank, a credit line. Just understanding a little bit about their financial capacity. So the process that we'll be going through, the RFQ is where we're at now. And we'll talk about the timeline later in the presentation. After you've selected your developer, usually you'll, you'll have a, you know, interview process perhaps, and then you will shortlist based on the criteria and the scoring. The first thing that happens is we typically develop a memorandum of understanding, an MOU. That is a, usually it's a non-binding agreement, but it's sort of politically binding. It is, you outline at a high level the terms, what it is the city wants, what it is the developer is bringing to the table. And it's, it's enough of an agreement and outline structure that it gives both the developer and the city the confidence that, okay, now we can go forward and start spending the real money. We can pay our architect to do designs, pay our engineer to do some feasibility studies. As, and, and you do, and that enables that planning process to take place over the next six to 12 months, which eventually leads to the final transactional agreement, which is a development and disposition agreement. And that agreement is what actually, when the property actually transacts, and that has all the details of pricing. They can be quite thick, and probably 90% of the thickness is not about the deal itself, but it's about what happens if things go sideways and all the remedies and things that you do if the developer fails to perform, if conditions change, and so on. That, those kinds of backout clauses are really, really important so that if things go sideways, the city still controls the property and can go to developer number two without a complicated legal process. But it takes time to, to deal with that. There is also likely a whole slew of sub-agreements to go along with that, maybe parking agreements, easements, and so on. So that process, just in brief, the RFQ process can be one to three months. That's where we're at now. Once you've selected your developer, it's typically a six to, it can be upwards of 18 months, depending on the complexity of the project. But 12 is, is a safe bet as a minimum. And at that point, the developer's got their financing, the project is designed, and basically they're ready to break ground. And that's when you hand over the property through the disposition and development agreement. That also helps them with the financing because they have much lower holding costs because the city is retaining ownership throughout that period. So at this point, what we're going to do is Andrew's going to introduce himself, and then we'll walk you through the draft RFQ and some of the criteria that we are proposing for both the project itself and the developer partner that you're seeking.
All right. Hi, everyone. Thanks. I'm Andrew Oliver with Leland Consulting Group. And we've been working over the past few weeks with the mayor and with a subcommittee and City Manager Towery to craft this draft RFQ and try to capture the, you know, really important points of the vision that has been articulated by Heather. This is the, the vision statement so far, as it is, it's rather long. Perhaps I'll read it not too quickly. Although you'll see it in the final thing. But for now, I think the, the bold part is, is the important part. So the, the vision, you know, to advance the housing needs of the community, provide commercial opportunities, open spaces, gathering places, and create a sense of belonging for the McMinnville community at large. And we called out as well the city's core values of stewardship, equity, courage, and accountability, which, which we've included in here in a sort of little box, as you'll see. But anyhow, this, this sort of reflects, you know, what the subcommittee felt during our discussions were the most important components that the city wanted to see in this site. You know, both dealing with housing, also commercial opportunity and, and open space. And we'll talk a little bit about more of those in detail in the next slide here. So we've listed both desired uses, which are more concrete, and objectives, which are sort of more goal-oriented for the development. So a variety of housing serving different income levels, obviously, is very important. And we saw, you know, in the neighborhood that there are a lot of needs for housing at various income levels. Commercial space, that could be, you know, we discussed some things in, in the longer text in the RFQ, including things like live-work units or just opportunities for people to, you know, to be able to live near where they work. Parks, plazas, open spaces, there's a lack of open space in park nearby, as Heather was saying. So that's been called out as an important desired use. And then we had a subcategory that, that the subcommittee was, you know, interested in including of some, of some things which weren't totally, you know, must haves for the city, but were optional potential uses that if a developer were interested, you know, might be considered such as a hotel or, you know, utilizing some of these existing industrial site components as, as and when that might make sense. Objectives that we articulated in the draft. The development should be welcoming to the whole community. It should reflect the city's commitment to sustainability, to design excellence, create a sense of belonging for, you know, residents and also for the community at large who would come to the, to the site. Intentionally implement the city's equity and anti-displacement measures and a lot of that great research that the mayor did as part of the Harvard program. And of course, addressing McMinnville's pressing housing needs. And we saw the statistics on cost burden and, and how much people are paying for housing here. So that's a very important objective.
And I'll just, I'll just pop in. Because this is an RFQ, you're not asking for a proposal of exactly what is it that you're, you're not measuring the developer's proposal based on are they ticking these boxes or not? But what you're asking for is, A, have you done projects that carry out these objectives and uses in other communities? And then B, how, what is your approach or vision for how you might incorporate those into a project here? So not necessarily a specific idea, but a little bit about your process and your thinking and your, and your shared vision. We want to make sure that they, that they get it. And so a lot of the language in the RFQ is, is intended to make sure that they get it, that the, the committee and the community has been clear in its vision and that it gives the developer and their team the opportunity to, to tell us that, yes, they get it, and here's how they would approach it.
Yeah, and to that point, we proposed in the first draft here, a scoring criteria. So after, you know, receiving these submissions, so this is of course just a draft, so these sort of numbers aren't finalized or anything. But just as a way of, of looking at how the city and the committee and the community wants to weight what these developers bring to the table, what their vision for the, for the site is, and their, you know, their commitment to, to implementing what the city wants to see in four categories. First is, is just a vision. So consistency with the community, as Chris was just saying. A plan to incorporate, you know, those desired uses as well as design features and honoring the history of the site and the neighborhood. Then experience, so obviously the highest weighted category. And this is where you'll want to see, you know, that the developer has a variety of important track record of success, both with public-private partnerships in a development of the same size, skills and aptitude in community engagement. You know, the, really understanding how, what the community wants to see on the site and involving a broad range of, of community members. And of course, again, the history of design excellence. And then finally, some more sort of administrative criteria, you know, team background, the, the quality of the, you know, contractor, architect, et cetera, that bring to the table. Quality of the references, as Chris mentioned earlier. And then, you know, some token points to make sure that they've completed the document. So that, that was our, our initial draft here of, of the, of the criteria. And we'll have to discuss it, of course, in just a second. We already saw a calendar. This is the, this is the one we had in here. It's pretty much the same as what Heather had shown a minute ago. Looking to release this mid-next month and try to get a selection of the developer by the end of September.
Yeah, and I'll add, one of the, one of the tasks that we will be doing before the RFQ is actually even released is having some communications with prospective developers. Heather mentioned there's already a lot of interest. Meetings like this are public, and people hear about it. They know there's a project coming up. The, the worst possible outcome would be you issue an RFQ and nobody responds. And so we want to make sure that there's interest. We also want to make sure that the criteria and the, and the process that we're proposing isn't unreasonable to the extent that it's going to scare, scare interest away. We want to, we want to push the envelope, but we don't want to push it so far that nobody shows up. And so we want to, and so we can test some of these ideas with developers before we even issue it so that we increase the odds that they're going to respond when the time comes and it, and it becomes an official thing. So that may include some, that's going to include some phone and Zoom meetings, which we've already begun, but also potentially a site, an open house site tour for developers before the RFQ comes out.
Yeah, so that's the last slide. I can stop sharing this, although we can bring back up the, any points, of course.
All right. Wonderful. Thank you so much. I'm going to ask the first question, and then I'll look around to see who else might have questions. You mentioned in the combination of mentions here, the Director Richards, I think you mentioned that Phase Two environmentals showed some contamination 10 to 12 feet down. And we may be able to get some assistance in the removal of that. And I'm wondering, and I'm unfamiliar with this completely, so I don't know if this is just, you know, left field. But does that open up an opportunity to explore underground and park, underground parking, since we'll already be doing a deep dig and some of that dig will be theoretically the paid for?
So I guess there's two options here. One, you don't have to remove the soil because it is underneath and it's, it's not topsoil. So you could encapsulate it with a built environment, and that then, that then stabilizes it. That's one approach. The other approach would be if, if somebody did come in and propose underground parking to meet the parking needs of the site with a higher density developed site, they would then excavate and remove that soil. And then the soil will be housed, stored at a hazardous soil site.
Okay, great. I won't dig into that any further right now. I will look around to this joint committee for questions, thoughts, comments, concerns. Counselor Mankey.
Could you talk to me a little bit more about how you're, you want this to be equitable and you want to bring in lower-income people? How is that going to play out? I mean, are we talking deed restrictions? Are we talking percentages? How are you going to do this? Is there some kind of floating way of maintaining a certain amount of homes being in a, a lower income level?
So we've deliberately not said what, what levels of me, of income that we want to respond to quite yet in terms of the housing. We've talked a lot about that it, we would like to see have a mixture of housing serving a mixture of different housing incomes, much like our great neighborhood principles. We have, you know, in McMinnville, we've developed a toolbox of incentive programs to help offset the housing, affordable housing projects, both in terms of code barriers, as well as some other financial tools with SDC waivers. We've had some discussions with developers about, there's developers who will build that project in and of themselves that have experience doing both market rate and subsidized housing in, in a singular project, and they're the developer for it. There's other developers who team up with market rate housing developers and, and subsidized housing developers. So I think what we're going to do is see how people respond to that particular principle and value and then have that discussion. I don't know if you want.
No, that was about it. Yeah, we've been, we've been deliberate in kind of leaving the door open for a single developer or teams of developers, depending, you know, we want to see what, what's out there and what they can bring to the table. And, and the committee's been pretty clear about being, you know, articulating the, the goal for a variety of incomes, but leaving the specifics up to the, the developer and what's feasible.
I will say, just to follow up, and this might have been what the mayor was going to chime in with. But when, one of the things, when we were in, in Boston with the Harvard Institute of Design, the mayor presented the project, and there was a resource team of architects and landscape designers and urban designers that were providing feedback. And as the discussion, you know, evolved into a question much like what you just asked, we did get some feedback from some of the resource team. Have you considered dividing the parcel into two parcels coming down Ninth Avenue there? And so, and so that creates a separation. It may or may not be a necessary separation to, to achieve those types of housing. But what we've talked about as a committee is that we're open to those ideas. But we don't want to prescribe what works and doesn't work. We'd like the development community to do that.
Yeah, I'm happy to add a little bit more, which is that in terms of not calling out specific housing, but more calling out the variety, housing at a variety of level, income levels, we also didn't want to lock the RFQ into any terminology that might already be defined in state statute and therefore really heavily influence what the developer was able to propose. And then in Andrew's slide, and, and it's in your packet as well, you'll see one of the images shows kind of a dotted line going from Ninth Street into the site. And that was one of the suggestions, as Heather mentioned. Currently, that area is fenced, and so it appears as though it's closed. But we discussed other opportunities that might come with that as well, including that Alpine, of course, that section of Alpine has already been improved. And so orienting or, or opening that up creates some frontage on it, on this festival street where there's already natural community gathering happening, et cetera. Question, additional questions? And I'm watching on the Zoom too, if anyone on Zoom wants to jump in, Council President or Counselor Chenoweth.
So on the, on the Harvard study that's been discussed at many different meetings and levels is I'm still unclear how that gets incorporated into the process with the developer selection process, as well as what the final product is. And then as an advisory committee, is that something we have access to?
So I'll, I'll, I'll take that. So we've, we've, a lot of that research has been submitted to Leland, and it'll be an amendment in the RFQ, kind of like the Northeast Gateway Plan will be. So it's available for information. And it's information that wouldn't necessarily just be readily available, right? It was, it was research that we did that kind of unearthed a lot of this information. So that'll be available there. Correct me if I'm wrong, but your presentation today, I believe, pulled heavily from the PowerPoint that I provided at that time. So you've actually already seen, or you have in your email essentially, a, a lot of that information. What was the third part? You asked about seeing it and how it'll be included in the RFQ and, and when you were going to see it. Was there a third part to the question?
Well, that's really it.
Okay.
Yeah, so just to follow up on, on that. So what we wanted to do is, the question we had for the resource team and for the professors leading the institute was how do, how, we've, we learned all this about the neighborhood, we learned all this about McMinnville in terms of the data. And how do we bring those principles and values into the RFQ in such a way that it's development speak? And, and it can create that partnership? So. So crafting the language for that. So you saw me present sort of in this high-level value discussion, and then you saw Chris present it in terms of those bullet points as to the goals and values that will be in the RFQ, and that's sort of the translation piece. The Harvard Institute, the Mayor's Institute on City Design, has identified two of the resource team members that will be working with us over the next six weeks. We'll meet with them twice to really go through that refinement of language. So we're continuing to get support from them in terms of how do we take what we've learned and then put it into this document. And that is the, and that was sort of the emphasis of that whole project, was getting to an RFQ that gets us to the developer that we want, that has the shared values and principles. And then from there, we then take it as a city and community and continue the dialogue for the development agreement and the project and stuff like that.
That makes sense. I was just looking at it from the standpoint of, you know, being on the, you know, an advisory committee, getting things kind of piecemealed. And so I like to look at things very holistically. It's been my process throughout the years in developing in McMinnville is to look at a holistic, very holistic. And so I just want to make sure that we're getting the whole picture kind of as we're going through the process, and not just bits and pieces here and there, and then not sure what came from where, so.
Yeah.
That's how I'm looking at it, and so.
Yeah, so we will, the institute was a confidential space for all the mayors, and so we're working within that sort of agreement with the institute itself on what can be released and what can't. And so we have gotten to a place where we've shifted a slide deck to the consultants. I'm sure we can send that out to the subcommittee, but the slide decked I used tonight was 80% of it.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess reflecting back on our initial meetings that Walt and Kelly and myself and Heather had on this project, I'm concerned. From a fiscal standpoint, we initially anticipated turning this over rather quickly. I appreciate the desire to do it in a thoughtful, timely manner, but I believe our carrying costs to MIRAC are about $25,000 a month, and we were anticipating probably having this out in June or July, and now we're talking July of 2025. So I guess I would, when I supported moving forward with the acquisition of this property, it was based on those preliminary thought processes. So I support moving forward. I support it, but it's not what we originally spoke about, so just concern there.
Yeah, and Mike, if I can just clarify for the record, I think what I heard you say, when we first talked about, we talked about the trans, what you're talking about is the transaction of the property ownership from the city to the developer relative to June, July of this year versus June, July of next year, right? And not the actual getting out the RFQ.
That's correct.
Yep.
One more comment, if no one has anything else. This is, and this is something we can work on in committee as well, but I just want to bring it up, bring it up for the record. So in your timeline that you've got established in selecting someone for an RFQ, and then transitioning once that decision's made, the unknown timeline that's to be determined in several different ways, which is only somewhat scary in this day and age. But when I've done development projects in the past, there's quite a process that goes into feasibility analysis and market studies, market study reports that developers are going to want to do. They're going to look at some of the data that you presented, some of which isn't so rosy. You know, household income, developers want to see certain things based upon past experience. So we're going to have a little challenge there, bump in the road at some point, I think, when it comes to some of that research that's going to get done, the developers are going to require market studies. The reason the Graner District looks the way it does, not the way that I originally designed it, is because feasibility analysis. So there was reuse decision made after market studies were done, and a lot of money was spent on really cool plans, but weren't feasible. So we've got some, we've got some more challenges that we just want to make sure that we're very aware of, and as we continue to hold this going forward, and so.
Yeah, and just to follow up on that, so it reminded me, we'll have to figure out how we're going to position this. So the data that we provided within the fellowship was really looking at sort of justice pieces. So we were looking at the difference of what's occurring in this neighborhood versus the rest of the city. And so it's probably not a full scope analysis of the market feasibility in McMinnville, and we'll have to figure out how to convey that effectively. I know, so I've been meeting with the developers who are interested in this. I'm asked that question all the time. How are your multifamily projects doing? Are you seeing developers coming in with multifamily projects to develop? Are they developing, are they occupied at, you know, issuance of the CVO and things of that nature? And so that information is, yes, we're seeing a lot of interest in multifamily development. We are seeing multifamily projects being built. We actually have more in the pipeline right now than we've had in the last eight years altogether. And when they are built, what I'm hearing from developers is they are occupied, and there's wait lists on these. So that's a different market story that's not represented in the slides you saw tonight, and we'll have to figure out how to make sure we get all of that out there.
Positioning.
And I have committee member Kircher that would like to ask a question, and then we do have our next public meeting starting in four minutes. So committee member Kircher.
Okay, we're under the gun. Can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
Okay, good. I just want to agree with Kelly and Mike, and yes, there's a lot of opportunity with this property, but there is also a lot of challenges, and I think we need to be as realistic as we can about approaching it and moving the project forward in an expedited manner, especially since it's costing us over $700 a day. So I'd say we leave the RFQ as open as possible, see what the developers think, and then bring in as much wish list as we can, but make sure the project is successful and moves forward in a realistic manner. Thanks.
Thank you so much. We still have a couple minutes left. If anybody else has any questions or comments.
Mayor, just one comment that I just wanted to add to the mix, and that is that one of the concerns I have in an RFQ process is not scaring away applicants on the basis that there's a required element for a certain amount of open space. This is a kind, this is an area of specific definition and size, and what you can do and how cost-effective it is to do it will be impacted by how much, how much of the space is reserved for a public interest in open spaces and so forth. And so while I think that is a, it's an element that the community should be concerned and desire, I'm not, I'm not as comfortable with making it a required element of response from the standpoint, I see it more of a preferred rather than a required element in the overall mix. So that, I wanted to get that comment, and that was just one of the perspectives I had after our first blush review.
And I think maybe, and I don't know how we'd caveat this in the RFQ, but we've had discussions about the fact that the community's invested several million dollars in a public improvement there on Alpine Avenue, which is meant to be a community gathering space. It's designed specifically for that.
Yes.
So how does that serve that need relative to this development, rather than, you know, and how does that development play with that?
Interact with.
Yeah.
Do I have 30 seconds, real quick?
You got it.
In response. I just got back from Boston and did a lot of walking downtown, very walkable community. There's some really great public spaces that were very scalable, small, three trees, a patch of grass, some benches, kind of like you'd imagine on our Third Street plan. So there's things, there's all these little pocket things we can do to make it scalable, to create some, I think, public space.
And I agree that pocket parks are probably the way to go in this type of environment, especially when you have how people who are going to be living there, that can be incorporated into a design without, without making it less non-feasible.
Yep, that kind of flexible language is exactly what we're trying to fine tune at the RFQ. So it's not, you know, X square feet of open space and grass. It's tell us how you will invite the community into the project. It could be in a building, it could be an outdoor space, it could be through events and programming. It's the end objective that we want them to be accomplishing.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you for being here today. I will close the work session at 7:00 PM, and I am going to call, thank you, everybody. Thank you for being here, all of our MIRAC team as well. Now call the regular business meeting of the McMinnville City Council to order.
Mayor?
Yes.
We have to switch Zoom meetings, so can you give us a...
Oh, okay, we are actually going to take a five-minute break, then. Thank you.
Recording stopped.
Thank you.
Look at this guy, we sit next to each other again.
I know.
How's your boss doing?
I don't know, he's hanging in there.
Yeah, that's not the way that you answer something.
No, I don't think he's gonna, you know.
I don't.
I don't.
I think it's super.
I think it's super.
I...
I talked too much.
Wrong TV.
Wrong TV.
Yeah.
With that, no.
So.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
No, if you got just a, I don't think Sal is going to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, I got it for myself for my birthday.
Oh, wait, you got me.
Recording in progress.
Good evening. It is 7:05 PM. Thank you for bearing with us while we took a little break between the work session and now. I'd like to call the regular business meeting of the McMinnville City Council to order and request our associate city recorder, Daniel Ruiz, to do a roll call, please.
Councillor Geary. Councillor Mankey.
Here.
Councillor Chenoweth.
Here.
Councillor Payne.
Here.
Councillor Peralta is absent today. Council President Garvin.
Here.
And Mayor Drabkin.
Here, thank you. And I have asked Council President Garvin to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. We now have a series of proclamations to do, and we are starting out with our Parks and Recreation Proclamation. You may have just received your Summer Fund 2024 packet. Do you want to come up and say anything about this before the proclamation? Please.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Drabkin and council, for having us here. My name is Katie Noid. I'm with McMinnville Parks and Recreation, and Samantha Geary is from McMinnville Public Library. This is our fourth year coordinating the Summer Fund, all the programs, and we love doing it. We're very excited about the summer and all of the community programs that we will be hosting for the city. Yeah, you'll see some pictures on the slides there. This year, the theme is Parks and Recreation Month is Where You Belong, and the library's summer reading theme is Read, Renew, and Repeat. We would really like to thank all of you for your support, as well as a big thank you to our partners that help us put on these programs. We are not doing it by ourselves, as well as our park maintenance department, who gets all of our parks ready and is always willing to help out.
When we are planning for Summer Fun, our goal is to build on our sense of community through free, inclusive, mobile, and family-friendly activities that the residents and neighbors in McMinnville get to enjoy.
Again, this year, we will be having our summer concert series on Tuesdays in July in City Park, as well as storytimes, wellness walks, cultural performances. The bookmobile and the recreation van will be going out to various locations. There's teen programs, movies in the park, and much more.
So calendars are available now at the Aquatic Center, Community Center, Public Library, and Senior Center. And the detailed booklet will be available on Thursday, available at our booth at the farmer's market, or at any of our buildings. And of course, all this information is also on the city website under Summer Fun. Thank you all.
Wonderful, thank you. Do you want to stay up there while we do the proclamation? Excellent. This is a proclamation designating July as Parks and Recreation Month. Whereas McMinnville's Parks and Recreation programs enhance and improve the social, economic, and environmental fabric of our community, and whereas our Parks and Recreation programs are important to making McMinnville a super cool place to live, and whereas Parks and Recreation programs make people want to live here, and whereas Parks and Recreation areas help the environment and give us fresh air to breathe, and whereas our Parks and Natural Recreation areas make for fun places for kids and adults to go outside and play, and whereas the city of McMinnville recognizes the benefits of awesome Parks and Recreation resources, now, therefore I, Remy Drabkin, Mayor of the City of McMinnville, do hereby extend the spirit of fun to the residents of McMinnville in recognizing the month of July as National Park and Recreation Month. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand this 11th day of June in the year 2024. Next, we have a proclamation for the commemoration of Juneteenth as an annual celebration of Black African-American liberation. Whereas Juneteenth is recognized as the end of chattel slavery in the United States, and whereas President Abraham Lincoln first issued the Emancipation Proclamation effective January 1, 1863, declaring enslaved people in the Confederate states to be legally free. However, that... However, that proclamation could not be enforced in lands under Confederate control. On April 9th, 1865, Confederate forces surrendered, effectively ending the Civil War. On June 19th, 1865, Union soldiers arrived in Galveston, Texas, bringing news of the President's order freeing enslaved people two and a half years after it was first decreed. This day has since come to be known as Juneteenth. And whereas Oregon's exclusion laws lay the foundation for generations of economic hardship, exclusion, and discrimination against Oregon's Black African-American community. And whereas through other systems of oppression, such as sharecropping, Jim Crow, exclusionary and destructive housing and transportation policies, denial and disruption of voting access, and mass incarceration, the plunder of Black bodies and Black wealth continued past slavery and persists to this day, affecting the physical and mental health, safety, and education of Black African-Americans. And whereas despite these obstacles, Black African-Americans in Oregon have been and continue to be vital community members and leaders within our state. And whereas Juneteenth has been celebrated in Oregon since 1945, when Clara Peoples moved to Portland from Oklahoma to work at the Kaiser shipyards and introduced it to her coworkers. And whereas the Oregon Legislature has unanimously voted to recognize Juneteenth as a legal state holiday beginning in 2022. Now, therefore I, Remy Drabkin, Mayor of the city of McMinnville, do hereby recognize and proclaim Juneteenth, June 19th. Recognize and proclaim Juneteenth, uh, June 19th as an annual celebration of Black African-American liberations, past, present, and future, and those who continue the work to realize that liberation. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of McMinnville to be affixed this 11th day of June 2024. And we have one more proclamation this evening, which is the designation of June as...
Mayor?
Yes?
Can we have Katie come back up and...
Oh, yes.
...say some info?
Hello, again. My name is Katie Noid, I'm with McMinnville Parks and Recreation. Jenny Berg with the library, and Larry Miller from the Diversity Equity Inclusion Advisory Committee, and I have been working on a Juneteenth celebration, and so I wanted to share that information with you. This is the first time the city of McMinnville has done a Juneteenth celebration. We know that this is one of the things that we are working on, especially the Parks and Recreation, the library, working on. We will have a Juneteenth celebration on Friday, June 21st, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at Beerly Brewing. This is in conjunction with the Make Music McMinnville Day, as well as Mac Fresco. So it's all happening on June 21st, be downtown or be in the downtown McMinnville area. It will have, uh, we will have a reading from the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Committee, the historical legacy of Juneteenth, and then a performance by the group Views and Vibes, which is kind of a funky instrumentalist group. It's gonna be super fun. So that's gonna be at Beerly Brewing, 6:00 to 8:00, and this is on behalf of the city of McMinnville. So I will pass out some flyers if you would like them, and then invite people, but there's gonna be a lot of things happening on June 21st. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Our final proclamation this evening is the designation of June as LGBTQIA Pride Month. And whereas the fight for equality continues for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer individuals and other historically marginalized members of our community, and the responsibility falls on each of us to form a more equitable and inclusive society. And whereas the city of McMinnville pledges to honor, exhibit, and otherwise live at our core values of stewardship, accountability, courage, and equity. And whereas June 28th, 2024 marks the 55th anniversary of the Stonewall uprising, six days of demonstrations led by Marsha P. Johnson, a Black transgender woman, excuse me. I'm gonna ask Council President Garvin to finish, because it's making me emotional, and I don't like being emotional in public, especially broadcast on television. So, thank you Council President for finishing this proclamation. I can do the part where my name is, for sure.
Okay. I'm just gonna start over at that paragraph. Whereas June 28th, 2024 marks the 55th anniversary of the Stonewall uprising, six days of demonstration led by Marsha P. Johnson, a Black transgender woman sparked by the targeting and arrest by police of lesbian, gay, transgender bar patrons in violation of their civil rights, an event widely recognized as the beginning of the modern gay rights movement. And whereas on June 2nd, 2000, President Bill Clinton declared June to be Gay and Lesbian Pride Month to commemorate the June 28th, 1969 Stonewall uprising. And on June 1st, 2009, President Barack Obama expanded the commemoration by declaring June to be Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Pride Month. And whereas the city of McMinnville stands with the LGBTQIA+ community in the struggle to ensure equal treatment for all, and to defend and advocate for the LGBTQIA+ rights as human rights. And whereas despite this extraordinary and inspiring progress, the LGBTQIA+ Americans continue to face discrimination simply for being who they are. And whereas the city of McMinnville commits to advocate for protections for all LGBTQIA+ individuals to make our city a place where all people, regardless of their sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression, are treated with dignity and respect.
Now, therefore I, Remy Drabkin, Mayor of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim the month of June as LGBTQIA Pride Month. And in witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand this 11th day of June in the year 2024. And I would like to take the opportunity to thank Council President for demonstrating allyship. We are now going to comments from community members. City Recorder Team, my Zoom link isn't open, so I can't monitor the chat. If you can either help me or send me a new link, I would appreciate it. So, any interested audience member is invited to provide comments, and any comment provided that requires some type of follow-up will be assigned to a staff member. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing now or at some point in the future. Comments are limited to three minutes per person for a total of 30 minutes. If you wish to speak, please use the raise your hand feature in Zoom, and when your turn is up, we will announce your name and unmute your mic. Or you can send a chat directly to our deputy recorder, not associate deputy recorder, Daniel Ruiz, and he will announce you. When you give your public comment, please announce your name and the city you live in for the record. And we also have information, um, comment cards in the back of the room, and we will need to collect that information from you as well. With that, has anybody signed up for public comment?
No one has signed up for public comment.
Okay, would anybody in the room like to provide public comment? Okay? And would anybody on Zoom like to provide public comment? Nothing? Okay. Thank you. We will now go into some of our presentations. We're gonna start with a stewardship report on city insurance coverage from Ryan Hartzell with Hagan Hamilton. So I'd invite you up, Mr. Hartzell, and thank you so much for being here.
Good evening, Council, Mayor Drabkin, thank you for having me. You know, the stewardship report is always something that, you know, we look forward to preparing each year. This one was a little bit more fun this year, because actually that I don't have any bad news to report, so, from an insurance perspective, that's kinda nice these days. So I, I'm pleased to report that the fact that the CIS insurance premium for the city of McMinnville for all the portfolio of insurance is actually gonna remain flat, maybe even slightly under a little bit. So, last year, we looked at 11.32% increase, and I thought that was pretty fair. We usually get, um, all the agents across the state, we usually get a forecast in about, end of February, March, about what rates will do, so we can prepare budgets. And Jennifer and I begin to look at that, and then try to make some budget estimates based on that. So obviously, this past year with the fire department, that had a positive impact. But I would say one of the driving forces behind being able to hold, you know, our premiums where they are, is we had a, an experience here in 2018 and 19 that was 552,000 in claims, and so that's gone. So we get to get that out of the experience rating, and we pick up a lot of really good years. So very pleased that, you know, we get to have some, um, some years in our, in our experience factors that are positive, that help keep rates in force. So we were looking at, you know, 16% on property, 16% on auto, and so with that experience rate in 2018 and 19, we get those are gonna remain flat. While it's not complete yet, we are looking at probably a pretty significant reduction in workers' compensation. So the mod rate went from a .99 to a .89, so anything less than 1's good, and .89's, you know, is excellent. So that gives us a little break on the premium, plus we're removing the payroll. And, you know, with the fire department, obviously that, you know, with the risks they incur, that will help substantially on the experience rating we think going forward, and help contain some of those claims. But I think what I wanted to take time to point out, if we want to move to some of the next screens, that the city of McMinnville, if we look at some peer averages, so we want to look at what the pool average is for city-county insurance services, and we want to look at how population of cities that are 25,000 or larger, which there aren't a lot to choose from in Oregon, but how does McMinnville stack up with some of these coverage lines? And so how does it look for the pool average, and then how does it look for, you know, by coverage line? And then how do we look among our peers? And so I'm really pleased to report, and there's a lot of data in here, and I don't want to dive too far into it unless somebody has a specific question, but there are two that I want to choose from, you know, sort of as we look through this. So if we want to go to the slide, well, let me just start, actually, with the first one here. You know, auto liability is, you know, we have a fleet of vehicles between, you know, emergency services, police, and then all the city-owned, you know, vehicles. What, you know, what's the number of claims we have versus what's our average cost to claim? So we are substantially under our claim count by the pool average, as well as cities over, you know, peer average of 25,000, which is remarkable. So this is where, you know, our vehicles caused bodily injury, property damage to somebody's property, or hit other vehicles, or anything like that. So we're running a 13% loss ratio on auto liability. That's just terrific. That is well below both pool and peer average. The next one is the auto physical damage. This is comp and collision on our own fleet of vehicles. Again, you know, running a loss ratio, this is, this is very impressive, you know. Average cost of claims, $2,200, 13% loss ratio, again, below peer group, below pool average. And when I mention pool average, that just means that that is every public entity that it's, you know, participates in CIS. So there's a lot of small communities, and, you know, municipalities included in there. The next one, next slide here is the general liability. So this is the largest bulk of the premium for the city of McMinnville. This is, um, this is the big one. This is the one that I like to see a lot of. So if we have, um, claims where, you know, somebody falls on a sidewalk and feels like there's some liability back to the city, this is where we need to get involved. We're running a 31% loss ratio on that, well below, of course, peer group population, and well below loss ratio average for the pool. So could not be happier with, that is our largest premium line, and that's down. So that's trending very well, also. And then property is the next one, so our second largest, um, line of coverage. And we're, we're talking about almost 220 million of total insured value for all the properties for the city. Again, we've had a couple small claims, but if you look at our average cost of claim and our loss ratio, we are considerably outperforming the pool and the, and the peer group. And these are important for a number of reasons, and it isn't just one year. I think it's, you know, we're looking at six years, the last three have been excellent. So whatever department managers, risk management, things are in place, I just want to take the time to recognize that, and that does have a positive impact on, on the city and the cost of insurance and the things we're doing. So much appreciation and recognition to everybody that takes the time to, you know, sign the contracts, get the certificates of insurance for risk transfer, avoid loss, making sure when we have people that are not employees, that are conducting events here, where we're doing the things we needed to protect the city, that's very helpful. So a job well done the last few years as we look at these things and go forward. So really, again, pleased with the results. I don't get a chance to say this very often as I sit in these meetings when we, you know, meet with other municipalities and cities and public entities. So very, very happy to report some, some positive news on the two main insurance, both the workers' compensation and the CIS. The other lines of coverage, again, we think we're gonna finally see some, some flattening of the curve a little bit in cyber here. That renewal's not quite complete, that comes up in, in August, but we feel like, you know, finally that's calmed down perhaps a little bit. While the risk is still there, feels like everybody's getting smarter about cyber and what we need to do, you know, in that world to protect the interests of electronic information. So with that said, any questions?
Thank you. Council President.
Thanks for coming out and presenting, Ryan, I always appreciate it. The numbers overall do look great, I would agree with that, and knowing what my commercial premiums did, I'm happy to see the city's pretty even. As far as the SAFE goes, is the city eligible for dividend checks, like typical work comp with SAFE is, or are we just saving money in our, our rating?
Yeah, so you, you will receive a dividend once you've participated for enough years. So the city moved from the CIS program to SAFE, I think about four years ago. So once those four years are contained and we know what the losses are, then the dividend will be calculated, so we would, would see one, yes.
Sounds good. And then, um, the only, I think it was page 20 of our packet for other councilors, but the auto liability claims, for whatever reason, it seems like the library really jumped out there, um, which has, you know, probably one of the fewest amounts of vehicles in their department. Is there any recommendations you would have from like a risk management perspective that we need to do to mitigate that going forward?
Yeah, you know, we looked at that, and I know exactly, you know, what you're talking about. I just didn't see any trends in there or anything necessarily that you saw us, again, you know, for the number of employees and the frequency count, yeah, we were up a little bit. We are keeping an eye on it, but I didn't see anything, because what I'll look at is, you know, is there a driver that's given us some problems that we need to have a conversation with and recommend that management to visit with them, their supervisor? I didn't really see that necessarily an issue. Or what, what was the scope of claims? Did we see a lot of backing? Did we see side swiping? I didn't really see anything in there. We'll keep an eye on it, but I didn't really see one thing I could put my finger on that says, hey, we need to, we need to do this with the library.
Okay. Well, thank you and...
For asking.
Thanks to Hagan Hamilton for another great year.
Thank you.
As a little bit of an extension, do electric vehicles versus gas versus diesel, how does that affect on the kind of micro level how insurance rates roll out?
Yeah, there has not been really any significant change in premium on anything. The one thing about the electric vehicles, the valuation's a lot more, so they are a little bit more expensive to repair. So I'd love to see the reduction in premium, because they, I think, as, as they get safer and we're putting more things in, that's gonna calculate that. I just don't, the technology hasn't been reflective yet in the insurance premiums. The one thing is the, like the cameras in those vehicles, if you back an electric vehicle, they're just so expensive to fix. They're, they're not expensive when you're manufacturing the vehicle, but repairing them from an insurance perspective, those have been pretty expensive claims on, on electric vehicles. So I think that will catch it, but right now I can't say there's anything that just drives the, the, the rate that, you know, electric vehicles are less premium than a gas or diesel-powered one.
Thank you.
Thanks for asking.
And can you expand? Where...
Where, do you address cyber insurance in here?
The cyber insurance, we have the expiring premium. We're working on, we're looking at some higher limits right now. We don't have that. The cyber liability premium currently is $21,000. It's not in there. That renews mid-August, so we don't have that premium back.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Can I, sorry, can I piggyback on Council President's question? I don't expect you to recall, but maybe you can. And on off-chance that you can, there's a lot of claims that are parked vehicles and I'm wondering if maybe we just need to be parking our library vehicles somewhere else? Like maybe our library, like maybe there's a hazard in the library parking lot or something?
Yeah, I think as, again, risk management, you look at that and I would love to tell you, and that's why when I see the claims, I look at them and we sort of chart that out and say, can we get our hands on, is it a frequency thing on one particular area where we can see that? I don't see that. I don't know that it's necessarily been break-ins or necessarily anything there, but I'm going to take a note of that. We'll keep watching forward. I think if it, they haven't been expensive claims, so they haven't really got our attention in that regard, but more frequency I think than anything. But yeah, good idea for sure. I mean, something to watch over.
Do additional questions at this time? Mr. Towery?
Thank you, Mayor, Members of Council. I just want to acknowledge Ryan's help. You see him once a year. We talk to him dozens of times throughout the year. Ryan's really proactive about bringing information to our attention as he sees it occurring. We reach out to him when we have questions. We get a lot of great advice. We're really well-served by Ryan and the Hagen-Hamilton team. I also want to thank him for acknowledging the work of managers and risk managers in the organization. But what we're really trying to do is build a culture of safety throughout the organization. We have a really active safety committee. I read their reports every single month. We encourage our employees to identify safety issues and concerns as they see them and that's sort of approach and philosophy, I think, is what's been driving the numbers that Ryan has been describing over the last several years. Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Thank you so much for your time today. We appreciate it. I would now like to invite James Lofton, our City Engineer, up to present on engineering fees.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight. With me is Dan Eds with Praxis Solutions. He's going to be doing the majority of the presentation. I'm here for moral support and maybe to add some comments here and there, but Dan, if you want to introduce yourself and take it away?
Sure. Again, my name is Dan Eds, founder of Praxis Solutions and we had the opportunity to provide you with a user fee study, which essentially looks at the cost of engineering, in this case, the cost of engineering services, so that you can price those services out accordingly, not overcharging. And if you want to undercharge, that's your privilege, but you can't overcharge. So we came up with a number for each fee item and that happens to be generally speaking a fairly important part of a city's revenue structure. Before I get into the presentation, just two quick comments. One, I have a place at the end of the presentation for questions, but if you have a question or a comment throughout the presentation, please feel free to stop me. I'm more than happy to accommodate. Also, before I get going, let me just give a shout out to your staff. James Heather on the building side, Stuart. These programs operate in a data-intensive environment and everybody was just phenomenal to work with. And when I say I need this data by like next week, they say, okay. In contrast, I'm working right now, happened for the last year and a half with a city down in Southern California, and they wanted the project done in six months. We might get it done by the end of this month. So I appreciate your staff and the culture that you've really serving not only the customers, but your vendors as well. So.
Thank you. And thank you for taking the time to say that as well. Our city teams don't always get acknowledged for the hard work and their expertise and we do have an incredible team here at the city. So thank you.
I appreciate that and I've been doing work in the public sector for almost 30 years and generally speaking, that's a pretty broad observation is that public sector servants do a ton of work without acknowledgement. So appreciate that. Thank you. Next slide, please. So the purpose of this project is really threefold. One was to reduce the competition for resources as public improvement projects come online. So what you have right now is a situation where there's a growing number of public improvement projects coming online in the pipeline, expected to be started over the next several years. And as those public projects come online, that means there's going to be more competition for staff resources to not only do the work for the public projects, but also for the private sector as well. Secondly, to maintain increased customer service and responsiveness. Generally speaking, I find that those communities that have the highest fees also have the best public, the best service in serving the community within the development community. Thirdly, increase cost recovery from the development community to avoid subsidizing development from the general fund. Because to the degree that private development does not pay for itself, the difference comes from the general fund. Examples of the need, if you will, on the next slide, please. For example, right now a sidewalk fee, the sidewalk fee has not been updated since 1958. Math tells me that's kind of a long time. The fee for a 75-foot sidewalk is currently $5. A fee for a sidewalk that's 76 to 199 feet is $10. And 200 to 299 feet is $15. And actually, I'm told that your code says $2.50. And I don't think I have to tell anybody, you probably can't process a check for $2.50. So we might say it's time to look at your engineering fees. Finally, the city is not recovering sufficient costs from a plan review projects because many projects are canceled before permitting. So the process, the way the process works, if I need like a sidewalk permit, I would come in, I'm going to talk to James or one of his staff and I'm going to submit to them my plans for my sidewalk and someone is going to review those plans. Some point later, construction will begin and then I will pay a permitting fee. Well, there is a time lag between the time I bring those plans in and the time I pay for the permit. That could be anywhere, I suppose, from a few days to a year. And often those projects can be canceled. And so when a project is canceled, even though the plan review has been completed, there's no cost recovery. Not too long ago, I walked into the city offices in a city in California and the city engineer took me to a room where it was full of rolled up big pieces of blueprint paper and he said, I think we have a problem here. He said, I estimate we have $2 million worth of plan review work in this room and we will never, ever collect it. So that's the kind of thing that we're trying to set up a process and in doing the user fee study, we're looking for those kind of issues that can be corrected. Next slide, please. So the objectives of the project were pretty straightforward. One is to develop a thorough and robust schedule of engineering fees. Right now, your engineering fee schedule is extremely limited. When I actually was looking for it at the start of the project, I kept thinking, where is the engineering fee schedule? And it's very, very limited. So one of the things we needed to do was really start from scratch and rebuild your engineering fees. And then develop a model that calculates the full cost of each fee. When I say full cost, I mean labor to do, to actually do the plan check, labor to do the inspection, all of the administrative overhead for the department, all of the citywide overhead, customer service, everything. We're looking at the division as a business essentially and trying to incorporate all of the cost that it would take to process any given application. Also, we did a comparison, which is pretty standard in these projects where in this case, you see the list of cities where we did a fee comparison. I will get into the mechanics of these comparisons in a bit. And then we also conducted a stakeholder outreach, I guess maybe two months ago, where we invited members of the development community in and we presented all the numbers that you have in your report, the process, the methodology with them, and we have made some slight modifications since that time. And that was actually, I thought, a very important part of this project because it gives the development community an opportunity to express any concerns, their thoughts and their considerations. Next slide, please. So the methodology that's used in these projects is, I call it a driver-based costing model. So we're not just throwing a bunch of numbers into an Excel spreadsheet and shaking it three times and seeing what the numbers come out. We're actually tracking the flow of work through the work unit that we're looking at. And so, and this is strictly a hypothetical illustration, it's for illustration purposes only. So we see you have four staff and engineering tech, a project engineer, city engineer, public works director, and then we have five various steps. So we're tracking the flow of cost through all of those steps until we finally say, okay, right-of-way permit actually costs X. And again, as I mentioned, that is the full cost to the city, just as if you were a business and you needed to price your products out accordingly. Next slide, please. So these are the actual numbers for a early grading and drainage plan review. You'll see on the left-hand side, all of the activities that are involved with the, in the process of reviewing that application and doing the inspection work. On the right-hand side, going across the top, you see the staff that are involved with it. And then between, in the lines, you see the hours that are estimated to be required, required number of hours to process each one of those applications. And so you see there, it takes a total of 22 and a half hours to process one of these. We multiply each one of those hour times a productive hourly rate by position and we come up with a direct cost of $2,338.76. Then we add in some citywide overhead, department management and administration, as well as customer service, to come up with a total cost of $4,896. Let me reference one of these line items and that is customer service. So you have a beautiful customer service center where people can come and they can get a question answered. It may or may not result in a project. It's open to the public. I've watched people come in and they get great customer service. One of the things that I find is that most cities really want to provide outstanding customer service to their, not just the development community, but anybody who walks in and has a question about their property, their house, sometimes their taxes and all kinds of things. So we've calculated a prorated amount of cost for that. And if you're looking at that number on a percentage basis, it's fairly high, but from my experience, that is not abnormal. Those customer service centers are not free. They're nicely laid out, they're fully staffed, and so we've captured, within each fee, we've captured a prorated amount for basic customer service. Next slide, please. So sooner or later in these presentations, someone is going to ask me, well, how do you know you've got good numbers? And generally speaking, I say, there's no 100% foolproof way of knowing that the numbers that we have are 100% accurate. That would essentially require putting an ankle bracelet on every member of the staff and then calling them up every five minutes or 10 minutes or maybe an hour and saying, what are you doing, what project are you working on? And doing that for maybe three years and then we can get pretty precise. So we're working off of estimates of time, basically. And I have three quantitative measures of quality to make sure we have good inputs and good outputs. First one is that budget expenses entering the cost model must equal the total expenses accounted for in the model. To describe that in a simplistic way, if we start out with a half a million dollars worth of budget, I have to account for a half a million dollars. And my spreadsheet blinks at me in red lights if I have more or less. Second thing is projected revenues from fees must closely match actual revenues from fees. So in this case, the model is pretty easy. Since we completely redid your fee schedule, my model says there's no way we can actually project out current revenue, but if we had a full assortment of fees, what I would need to do is account for plus or minus 10% within my model, actual revenues. And then available staff time must be fully accounted for within the costing model. So for example, if I have staff time and total staff time equals 10,000 hours, I need to account for 10,000 hours and not 10,001 or 9,999. It has to be precise. And then finally, the last one, somewhat similar to the first one, total revenues from fees and contributions from the general fund or other sources must match total expenses. So if I have a half a million dollars of total expenses, when I look at revenues from all sources, fees, general funds, grants, whatever, I have to account for a half a million dollars. Next slide, please. Any questions that I could address at this point before I start getting into the summary?
I have one. You started by saying, of course, that we can charge up to full cost recovery, but not over. And so how is that addressed from a legal perspective if we're doing average or assumptive hours on customer service?
Sure, sure. Yeah, great question. Generally speaking, most states have an approach that says a reasonable estimate of cost. I don't know of any state that says it has to be precise. And frankly, there's no way of making it precise. And so we're looking at a reasonable average of cost. We're looking at estimates of time, but as I mentioned, we have checks and balances to make sure that we're not over allocating cost or under allocating cost. And so we're looking at, the operative word there is reasonableness.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions at this time? Thank you.
Okay. Next slide, please. So we actually ended up with potential or projected engineering revenues if the city decides that full cost recovery is in its best interest of $458,000. As the note down there says, there actually is a projection for this fiscal year for about $50,000 of revenue coming from a variety of sources. Because we started completely from scratch with a new fee schedule, there wasn't any way that I could accurately and reasonably model those numbers. So I just put a footnote down there. Obviously, if, this would then suggest a potential additional revenue recovery of $403,000, $408,000. And that is, that matches perfectly with your cost. And so this is a complete cost and revenue matchup. But again, the city may or may not wish to fully recover all of its costs from private development. Next slide, please. Thank you. One of the things that we noticed with engineering and over the last, I'd probably say 10 years, and this is throughout all of the West Coast where I work, is that engineering and this is all throughout all of the West Coast where I work, is that engineering services is partnering more and more with planning services, where, and I'm sure Heather could speak to this probably more accurately than I can, but where a project comes in through the planning department, they are either through practice or policy or regulatory requirements, will take that application and have the engineering department look at it. And that's growing both in terms of complexity, as projects just become more complex, engineering gets more and more involved. And so, one of the things that we did was we looked at the planning fee schedule and the engineering fee schedule, and in some cases, we combined them. So, if you look at your report, it will say planning fees that engineering department will routinely look at. So, again, we're looking at full cost recovery, and so, that when Heather's team brings a set of plans to the engineering, the city can get, can recover its costs for that engineering opportunity. Next slide, please. So, this is just an example of the kind of calculations that we do. You see there are three fees, three application types. We've calculated the full cost, I'll just take the first one there, $548 for utility permit plan review. The activity level is 130. That means over a 12-month period of time, you either have or you're expected to actually process 130 of those, which then would suggest $71,201 of revenue to the city. And so, that's one of the things we're looking at, is not just what is the actual cost per fee, but what's the revenue impact to the city? And I've got three of them outlined there, total of $174,000 just for those three. And in the report table that you've been provided, that's one of the essential calculations in that report table. I've provided you a very broad level overview of the results for cost recovery. Is there any questions you might have at this point?
Counselor Menke? No? Oh.
All right, good. Okay. So, let me move on to the comparison survey, and next slide, please. So, when I do these comparison surveys and making these presentations to council, I feel like taking a stop sign, waving and saying, let's be cautious here. And there's several challenges with these comparisons. One is that we are comparing a current price with a, current cost with a price. If, say, the city of Newburgh, where you can compare the cost of their sidewalk permit with the cost of yours, that may be $5, they might say, oh, we're kind of expensive. But in reality, it can be perfectly aligned, and so, comparing, you know, a, let's say, a $500 sidewalk permit with a $5 permit, we're not comparing apples and apples, we're not even in the fruit category. Fee requirements don't always match, and so, when we're looking at fees, I'm looking for something that resembles what is described in your fee schedule, and those descriptions don't always line up. Thirdly, many communities do not routinely update fees with a robust cost analysis. As we just mentioned, the last time your fee schedule was updated was in 1958. That's probably on the longer end, but it's not unusual for me to do one of these projects and find out that the fees have not been updated for 10, 15, or even 20 years. Lastly, service levels and processes can vary dramatically. To give you an example, I have a client, had a client probably five years ago, looking at their building fees, and they had a practice, if a builder called up and wanted to schedule an inspection, they would get back to them within 10 days. Every other city I've worked with was either 24 hours or same day. And so, if a city says, well, we'll get back to you in 10 days for example, a building inspection, you can imagine that those, the cost of those services is going to be lower simply because their service level is lower. And so, I've provided three examples. So, the next slide, please, thank you. Here is the major right-of-way, and you can see in the red that your cost is a little over $3,000. And you can see the other cities, there's a couple of blanks there. That's not because they don't have one, it just means that I couldn't model it. They might be using some kind of a percentage of engineer's cost estimate, they could be doing time and materials where it's a deposit plus an engineer's time, so there's just no way of modeling it. It's not saying that they don't have, for example, Newburgh, it doesn't have, they don't have a fee. And one of the things I urge councils is to, don't look at an individual fee, look at the trend. And so, in this case, the trend is that your fee, your cost for this particular fee is probably on the lower end of average. It's not, certainly not the lowest, it's certainly not the highest. So, the trend is, in this case, that the fee is on the lower end of average. Next slide, please. So, sidewalk and driveway permits, and here you can see that McMinnville's cost is actually a little bit higher than the others. And James, do you want to make a comment on your response to this?
Yeah, I do. You know, close to $800 is what is actually costing us to issue and manage a sidewalk or driveway permit. It includes the inspection, it includes the follow-up time with residents or contractors. There's a lot that goes into it, where with, you know, a current fee of $5, we just don't collect. Now, we understand, there's a unique scenario in McMinnville where the residents are responsible for maintaining their sidewalks. We want to encourage that, and so, it would be staff recommendation not to go with full cost recovery for sidewalk permits. We'd be recommending 25%. And we wanted to get some feedback from council, and in a quick thumbs up or thumbs down if that makes sense, or if you would be supportive of that, or if there's any questions on it.
I think Council President has a question?
Yeah, so, is sidewalk permit like a street tree permit, where you've got to pull it every time you do a sidewalk, or is it like an SDC fee where it's grandfathered if you've already had a sidewalk there?
Every time you do work in the right-of-way, you should have a permit. It's different than a street tree permit. It's an over-the-counter permit that we process, but people are supposed to pull a permit when they tear up sidewalk and they're replacing it, because we do have to check it to make sure it's ADA compliant. And so, there is a fairly rigorous inspection process there that the city has to perform to make sure it's compliant for pro-AC.
So, I could get behind the 25% if there's a caveat that that fee is waived down to $5, if the sidewalk replacement is due to improper tree species that the city had required to be planted when the home was built. So, if the sidewalk's getting replaced because of the tree species that we as, you know, Tree City America mandated a tree get placed there, I don't feel we should also be taking more money from our citizens to just get their sidewalk safe again for their surrounding neighborhood.
That could absolutely be a policy directive. We always have the right to waive fees, if that's what council would like to do. Oh, yeah.
I think, I think along those same lines is the proximity to the sidewalk and understanding the damage that's going to cause from a tree, a tree's root system because it desires to be near the surface. Like, if you're going to require that grass be planted around the tree, then you're going to have a tree's roots rising to the surface because grass is going to draw the water to the surface. So, I think there's some complexities with that. I also want to add that there are several areas around town where there's easements with Mack Water and Light, and then McMinnville Water and Light has a leak, for example. And then, if, for example, somebody tears up their driveway because they don't know, or McMinnville Water and Light is, for example, refusing or denying that it's their problem or issue, and now they've torn out their driveway, but the burden, I mean, there's some conflict there. So, I understand that there's a discretionary element to that, so I just want to be mindful. I would like engineering staff to be mindful of that, and I see that Counselor Chenoweth has a question.
To clarify my point, James, it was on the historic species. I mean, we've updated our tree list, and so, you know, on any newly planted trees that we've identified their root structure is going to go down and, you know, be contained, and I believe we have a planting requirement that they're now caged, or whatever that arborist term is, you know?
Root barriers and...
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of trees that were, well, we've learned how to plant it better now, we know better now. And I think it's getting into a pretty broad conversation on trees versus sidewalks. We can absolutely come to you guys with a schedule that implements flexibility for how to deal with those unforeseen's. And I would like to speak on the Water and Light one. They've been fantastic in working with Public Works lately when they have had breaks, and to fully address those breaks and replace everything affected by those, so I would like to make sure they're recognized for that.
Thank you for doing that. I see Counselor Chenoweth has his hand up, and so, we will go to him in one second. I just want to say that the city of McMinnville, we love to talk about our trees.
Yep.
Okay, Counselor Chenoweth.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to expand a little bit on what Adam, or Counselor Garvin was saying, Council President Garvin, sorry, was saying. I totally concur that we shouldn't be assessing fees for mistakes that we made in our choice of trees in those areas, but I also do think we really need to be cognizant that we do want those sidewalks to be fixed and to be replaced, even if it's an area where it wasn't caused by trees that we chose poorly with. So, we don't want these fees to be so high as to be a disincentive to fix what we need them to fix, if that's making any sort of sense.
Absolutely. Yep.
So, I would want that to make, I want to make sure engineering, as they're thinking about a fee structure, they're taking into both the account of poorly chosen trees, but also not wanting to prevent, be a barrier to actually prevent the repairs we need done.
Thank you. And then, I'll just add one more comment on this, which is that, has nothing to do with trees, but it does have to do with kind of the long-term equity of forcing our residents to manage their own sidewalks, which are really used by the public at large. And what happens, and what has happened in our city, is that low-income neighborhoods, moderate-income neighborhoods tend to have more broken sidewalks and no resource to fix those sidewalks, if there are sidewalks present at all. And many of our low-income neighborhoods also have no sidewalks present, or have sometimes, often I see gravel in between patches of sidewalk, which has tremendous safety issues as well as accessibility issues. So, we may not have the capacity to get there at this moment in time because of the tremendous, you know, need to really budget and lift up an entire program that would kind of address that in the long term. And in the long term, I would prefer to see us moving towards a direction where we don't allow low-income neighborhoods to fall into disrepair because we're expecting residents to pay costs that are so out of touch with their household income that it will never be feasible and never happen.
Agreed. And I would love to see a sidewalk replacement program that looks collectively at some of those neighborhoods that are in those low-income areas, and look at programs to assist and build those up, rather than putting all that burden on those residents. And is one of the reasons why, when we looked at this cost, staff would recommend not getting full cost recovery for this, but it is important to show you what it is currently costing engineering.
Yes, thank you. Any additional questions right now? Counselor Menke?
I would like to see some form of scheduling of how you might do this differently, because I'm not very happy with it as it stands currently. I tend to agree with Adam, but I just, there is a serious inequity in those, so...
One last question on sidewalks, James. Can you explain why our cost is so much higher than other cities when the ADA rules in the measuring and...
I think it's a little bit of what Dan spoke to. The other cities may not be their true cost, that's what their fee is. And so, that, what you're seeing, the 778 is our true cost. It's not necessarily the fee we're recommending. We're looking for a direction from council as to what percentage cost recovery he would like us to be at. And that, really, whatever that fee is, is what you'd be comparing to other cities. And so, they've made similar decisions as to how much cost recovery they want to be for those things.
Understood. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I think we're ready to move forward.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Next slide. So, erosion control permit, and again, I'm going to let James explain the nuances of this one.
I, this is another one where you look at our cost compared to what you may see as far as the trend for other municipalities go, and to me, a little bit of a red flag was raised, and I, right away, I started looking at some of these other cities, and the majority of them have alternative funding mechanisms for recovering their erosion control inspections and fee or permit management. McMinnville does not have an alternative cost recovery method, and so, that 846 would be the full cost recovery for managing, I'd call this a medium-sized project, where it's less than an acre, but it's larger than a single-family residential. We've tried to break it into tiers, so you're not charging everyone the same rate, but there's kind of some scalability there. So, for a medium-sized project, we think our cost is about 850-ish, and some of those other ones are not reflective of their full cost recovery, because that's just the fee they charge, but not necessarily what they're getting from other revenues.
Can I ask a question on this slide?
Yep.
So, I realize that it's less than an acre, I'm just curious if this considers the, and maybe this question is for Heather, but I'm curious if this considers the mercury and the maximum DLE?
It does. The city's TMDL requires us to implement erosion control program. The date's in front of me, but I believe it's by the end of '26, and so, later next year, we'll be bringing ordinances to adopt, to set up that program. As we're looking at our fee schedule now, I'm trying to look ahead and make sure we're prepared for when that program comes. And we anticipate having, basically, a tiered program. You have a single-family residence, you have less than an acre, and then you have more than an acre. And that'd try to be in line with what our TMDL requires us to have.
Thank you. And Counselor Menke?
What do you actually charge for this? Do you charge the poll 846?
We do not currently have an erosion control program.
We don't have anything. Okay. Yeah, well, definitely, I think we should be charging something, so, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Is that the end of the slides?
Is that?
Is that the end of the slides?
I've got a couple more.
Okay, the next slide, please.
Next slide, please. Okay, so, general observations and recommendations, and frankly, for me, this is pretty standard. I advocate or encourage councils to set policies or targets for cost recovery. Looking at percentage of cost recovery, James was just talking about one where staff may come back with a recommendation of 25%. Reductions in price for specific fees or groups, in this case, a good example, residential versus commercial. Identify costs to be recovered, which there are generally three. One is the direct cost, so I've had, I've had clients where they say, no, we just want to recover the direct cost of services and nothing more. Other cities will say, well, we want to include something of the indirect cost, not necessarily all of it, but something. And I've had clients say, no, the customer support cost is a benefit to the general public. And so, some will say, we want to recover 50% of customer service, others say we want to recover 100%, most say we want to recover 100. But those are the kinds of policy decisions that I think is very much in the realm of council jurisdiction. Adjust fees annually based on a simple CPI type of index, or the growth labor, cost of labor within the city. That gets you out of situations where a fee hasn't been increased or adjusted since 1958. One of the things that I see is that those cities where they establish a practice of adjusting fees annually, it is much easier for them to maintain a very high level of service for their constituents. And then, every three to five years, do a complete and thorough analysis, exactly like what we've done. Next slide, please. And then, maintain revenue target. And then maintain revenue targets. This is important for a variety of reasons. One is the like, things like keep technology updated. I consistently find, not in Oregon so much, but in California, engineering, planning, operations, building departments routinely operate in extremely outdated technology. And so keeping those revenues up is a way of maintaining updated technology. Second, bringing in staff resources as demand increases. Third, keeping staffing in place over a long revenue cycle. Now, James could speak to this more clearly than I can, but basically, and this is true not just for engineering, but for planning and building as well, a set of plans may come in today. It may take months for that project, if not years, to go through the cycle. And so if, let's say, a $10,000 project for plan review and inspection comes in today, that project may not be completed for three to five years. And so you need to maintain revenues so that you can keep those labor resources in place to take care of those long-term projects. Do you want to add anything to that, James?
Yeah, I would say engineering is a little unique in that, from other planning or building, in that while we're involved a little bit upfront and maybe the early stages of planning, when we get into the engineering design review, and then later we handle, you know, the construction and the permitting and the inspections, and then a lot of what we are managing or overseeing becomes city-owned and operated. And then we're involved in how do we, in the life cycle of that product, and eventually in designing a project to replace or update or maintain it. And so the, I guess I would summarize by saying the investment in the quality control and engineering is well worth the savings from the overall life cycle of the product we get. And it's programs that have good infrastructure, properly constructed infrastructure typically have a strong engineering department or collaboration with the operations department to produce that. And that would be the, a desire in engineering is continue to offer that service and produce high-quality products.
Thank you. And can you address that first bullet point and inform us of the age of the technology that you're currently using? Tell us a little bit about it.
Yeah, you know, that's a, I chuckled a little bit when I first came here, because we were still requiring a lot of physical plans to be turned in for engineering review. And that's not uncommon, but that is dated. And there's better ways to do that. And so the city already had Blue Beam, and this is just an example of technology, but Blue Beam as a PDF review software. And that allowed all of us to be in the same plan set, electronic plan set, reviewing it at the same time, collaborating in a review, where we can see what someone else is commenting, which may spark an idea in my mind, oh, yeah, I missed that, and I need to expand on that. And we can not only do that collaboratively in engineering all at the same time, but we can include other departments. We can include planning, operations, water and light. And so that was, that was a technological update that we implemented pretty quickly. And I'd say that reduced our review time substantially because we were able to do it simultaneously. That's just an example of technology.
Thank you. Are there additional questions?
Is there any other technology that you guys utilize that is very dated, like some of our other departments? Or is Blue Beam really the backbone of...
From a plan review perspective, I think Blue Beam is as good as we need right now. It could, you know, something may change in the future, but that's pretty much industry standard. From an inspection standpoint, there's still lots of opportunities for improvement, I'd say. One day, when we're out in the field doing a bunch of erosion control inspections, when we have that as a requirement, doing that in a paper form, I think back to my time when I was serving in another city, it took us about three, an hour and a half to three hours to do that full inspection, fill out all the paperwork, download all the pictures from the camera, and get it all on the computer and type up the report that was required documentation. We developed an app using our GIS software, and the city has Esri, and so we'd be able to do the same thing. We developed an app and we got that down to three minutes. And so another example of how we can leverage existing technology we have and just be smarter about it. And that's absolutely something we would aim to do as we get those requirements that we have to implement. But we do not currently have that, and that takes effort to build it.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Towery?
Mayor, let me just give another example of a technology opportunity. There are organizations, you know, our size or slightly larger, who often use drones in inspections. If you're dealing with a tall building, you don't have to send people up on ladders or scaffolds. You can use the drone to do the aerial inspections. You can also use small drones to get into confined spaces where it might be difficult for somebody to actually get in, crawl around. And so there are technology opportunities out there in this field.
So Captain Fessler, are you loaning your new drone to engineering, or is that off the table?
It's a city-owned piece of equipment. I'll fly it anywhere.
And building.
Councillor Payne?
Thank you. I have a question related to the manufactured home park per lot fee and then the recreational vehicle park permit. As you know, we have Old Stone Village, which is both. It is one park with both settings, with both lots. And so I'm curious how that would work in McMinnville. I mean, you know, that's, that's, that's specific to McMinnville. I mean, that's really, like, that's the only park I can think of off the top of my head. I guess there's probably others that may be quite a bit smaller. But I would just maybe caution you about that.
We've tried to structure the fee schedule in a way where it's clear for what's plan review and what is permitting as far as the cost recovery goes. Because as Dan discussed, sometimes during the planning of a project, they decide, ah, you know what, this doesn't pencil out, we don't want to do it anymore. But if the city's invested a lot of time in that, then that cost should be recovered. And that, and those are, those are unique projects, but it was further complicated with, you know, the variation in projects, you know, subdivisions are totally different than, say, a small-scale commercial project that wants to do a little bit of onsite improvements with their parking lot. And I do recall there is some good discussion on the mobile home-type lots or how we would address that. And I think we ultimately, with the plan review for some of those, we settled for onsite reviews being more tied to the valuation with building permits on some of that. It's much different than public streets. As a private project or a private property improvement, the city doesn't have the same, I guess, responsibility in the end for maintaining right-of-way, maintaining the streets and the side, all the improvements that come with that is costly, and we have to make sure they're built and constructed as standard. Whereas if it's private, you don't have that same responsibility. And so we tried to differentiate that as well. And that was, that was one where it was different than subdivision, so it would have a lesser cost than subdivisions.
Yeah, I'm thinking, well, and I think too, like, I forget the name of the, like, subdivision or whatever, but Hickory 678, you know, like, that's sort of in this weird turnover phase. So I'm, you know, there's, I think it might be relevant as that...
And I would be happy to answer maybe specifics and dig into, you know, how we would apply the fees for a specific project. It might be maybe as a follow-up discussion, is that, would that be okay?
Even if you just wanted to talk one-to-one, I'm just, it's more of a, I guess, I guess it brings me back to affordable housing, because there are a lot of people that are living in their RVs. And when there's issues, like, it is a public street, you know, we've got Kathleen Manor and Heidi Manor and Heather Manor, and those are public streets. Well, no, wait, Heidi Manor's not. But they are a park-type setting. And so I just have concerns about, the tax advisor told me one time that manufactured housing is the new affordable housing, and then this cost going into sort of the park space rent fee, I guess, is my concern. And now we're making something that's supposed to be affordable less affordable.
Sure. And it depends on how it's designed, too, because some of these will have individual sanitary services, individual storm improvements. And there's a, there's a million ways you can approach these projects. And so trying to look at averages or reasonable assumptions for these projects was our intent. I can guarantee we're wrong, but we tried to be as close as we can to what we expect to be our actual costs. And if, I'm happy to look at, we went through quite a few different project hypotheticals or scenarios, and then we tried to work it through the proposed schedule and see what it would cost. And in the end, we kept thinking that is reasonable. That is, that looks like a reasonable, that is typical amount of time that we're spending on this. And so it passed the sniff test or the check and balance there. Again, whether it's the council's decision to be full cost recovery on that or not, that's a policy decision. I'm happy to get feedback on it.
Thank you. Kind of staying in that same vein, usually when we discuss things around this, the policy direction we gave a couple of years ago to start looking at full cost recovery through, in our permitting and our fees, we often get feedback that, kind of like Councillor Payne just said, but in a more broad sense, we get feedback that this is just contributing to the rising cost of construction and development in McMinnville. Mr. Eds, what I kind of heard you say was, by not being fully up to date, that that's really where the cost is going to be hitting our developers when we're not able to turn things around for them. So I'm wondering if you can speak to that narrative a little bit, so, and kind of how you interpret that. So that's part one. And then, Councillor Payne, very specifically to your point, through planning, and this was mentioned earlier in the work session, but there's a whole toolbox that's been created for affordable housing, so that if qualifying projects are coming in for affordable housing, and I don't know if this extends to your department, but if not, that would be something that I would want to kind of mimic or look at what has already been done in planning, because that really addresses directly that issue of those who are trying to construct into a certain price point or provide housing in a certain price point, and how can we make that as easy as possible. So I would love to see that reflected as this comes back.
Absolutely. Thank you for that feedback.
Sure. I'd be more happy to address that. Actually, I actually love addressing that question. And I really goes to a couple of the points there. My conversations with members of development community here and all up and down the West Coast, many times goes like this. We don't mind paying a fee. We don't, what we don't want to do is overpay. But what really irritates us is that it takes nine months to get an application through the system. That's where our cost is at. And I have had clients in Northern California where the development community has actually moved away from a very buildable, very development-oriented lots of development activity. They've actually moved away from those cities because it takes months and months and months and months and months, if not years, to get a relatively simple application through the, through the system. And so one of the things, my conversations with members of the development community, and one of the things I like to remind people of, is you, you want to keep your revenues high enough so that you're not competing with the general fund. Because if there is a need, a legitimate need for an engineering tech, and the conversation is we could hire engineering tech where there is a very legitimate need, or a new firefighter or a new paramedic, the development community is going to lose that debate every time. Because public safety is of greater importance than hiring a new engineering tech. And so it's just, I have seen enough times when fees have been kept artificially low, that service levels eventually begin to erode. And when there is a legitimate need for new staff, there's no money there. And so I always advocate, keep fees as high as to full cost, keep fees as high or as close to full cost recovery as you can, because when you need those resources, there's going to be money there to pay for them. And I have seen cities literally close down their public library for two nights a week just to pay for development-related expenses. And I have seen cases where they haven't increased their fees by, in 20 years, and their service levels there to the development community is atrocious, and it's like a lot of anger. And so it's asking development community to pay for private development, actually, in my observation, is to their benefit. Because it keeps service levels high, it keeps things like technology updated. Not long ago, I was in a stakeholder-type meeting, and we explained to them the technology plan that we, that we were going to be proposing. And one of the developers said, now, wait a minute, you're going to be buying, and we label the technology. And we said, yeah, that's the technology we're going to be buying. And this woman said, I don't like paying for a fee. I understand the need, but I will pay for that because it's going to save me money in the long run. So I'll be quiet.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for addressing the question. Any additional questions this time? Okay. So you got some policy direction going forward. Obviously, you heard from a number of councillors, myself. Is there any additional policy direction you feel like you need at this time?
No, thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. Wonderful.
Actually, we do have one more, James. It's the implementation of full cost recovery right of way or over years.
Oh, yes. Thank you for that. We would recommend, we would prefer to implement this right of way rather than phasing or slowly phasing it in. But we needed the policy direction on that. That definitely affects how we structure the fee schedule. Any feedback on that, if you'd rather it be all at once or phased in over time?
Councillor Gary?
Not seeing total of the numbers. I think adding the fee on to the development community where the burden would be, I think it, I know that probably the inclination is to phase it in, but I think in the development community, it's often part of their pro forma, it's part of their calculus, it's, they're ready to go, they can pay those fees. I would be inclined to have full implementation, again, having not seen all of those numbers and what that would look like at the turn of the calendar. But I would be inclined to look at more, more towards a full implementation sooner, especially for that 100% at cost recovery for developers.
Thank you. Council President?
Just to clarify, you're talking about the fee schedule lined out in our packet, all those line items?
The, the fees that were in the report in the packet are the actual costs. That's, that's not the final schedule yet. We have not finished that. In the very, very front of the packet, in the staff report, under the discussion, there's a couple of things we need some feedback on that will impact that schedule. And that phased versus full implementation is definitely one of those.
I mean, looking at some of those numbers in there, where some things are going to jump, you know, $5,000 for a single fee, I would probably need to see the full fee schedule before I could give you a definite, but I would lean towards phasing it, you know, a short phase, but some sort of phase. If we vote for immediate implementation, it goes live July 1, right?
We will not be able to implement it with working with Acela by July 1. That'll take us a couple of months. But the plan would be after adoption that we would work into adopt implementation right away. So probably closer to September, 1st of September, I'd say, for actual implementation.
Okay. I guess my concern is you have people that are working on active projects right now, and, you know, that we get a new fee schedule that comes online in 90 days... and, you know, we get a new fee schedule that comes online in 90 days, and now their project, you know, might not pencil because they have these heavier fees that came on unforeseen. And I remember that from when we shifted the SDC methodology with the vet at the north end of town. He had a $50,000 fee that came online.
And if it would be preferred to grandfather active projects in under the old method, that's also something we could consider if that would be the preference.
I think that, I think that's a salient point of sort of a freezing period or a phasing period, or a grace period of getting these projects in, to a certain degree, keeps you at this fee structure. And anything drop dead after this date that comes through the door, you all know that it's this relevant fee structure. I think, I'd be up for that, for sure.
Hello? Thank you.
Any additional comments?
I totally agree with Zach and what Adam said. The grandfather period, I think is...
Right. So it sounds like you have at least half the council here leaning towards making sure that anything that's currently in the pipeline doesn't have any surprise charges, and definitely wanting to see the fee schedule come forward, but then moving into cost recovery, full cost recovery after a certain date that allows for that, folks that are in the pipeline right now.
And I also wanted to follow up, and as far as maybe fees or permits that impact residences as opposed to maybe developers, we had talked about maybe 25%. Does that sound reasonable?
25% with the caveat if it's, you know, city caused by dated tree plantings, we could make assumptions.
Sounds good. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you so much for your time. We now have a couple of public hearings. We will begin the public hearing process. For all public hearings being heard this evening, if you're testifying, please state your first and last name and address for the record. Each person testifying will be allotted three minutes for their testimony. We are now going to hear Resolution Number 2024-31, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year 2024 and making contingency transfers and repealing Resolution Number 2024-29. Does any councillor need to declare a potential conflict of interest or recuse themselves regarding this resolution? I would then like to call on Jennifer Cuellar, our Finance Director, to give a presentation.
Good evening. So the public hearing on the FY '24 change is, it's almost a repeat of what we did at our last session, but staff identified that we had missed $16,000 worth in the parks development fund, so the totals were inaccurate by that amount. So we reran the public hearing for that fund alone. So that was noticed on the 3rd, and now it's the public hearing. And later this evening, you will have opportunity to consider the resolution that is associated with this budget amendment for 2024. So the purpose for the amendment has not changed. I'm happy to talk about any of those details if...
Thank you. Does any councillor have questions for staff at this time? Okay. We'll now start to hear public testimony. Has anyone signed up for public testimony?
One has signed up.
Thank you. Would anybody in the room like to provide public testimony? And would anyone on Zoom like to provide public testimony? All right. In that case, I'm going to conclude the public testimony for this evening. And does staff have anything they'd like to add to the record at this time?
Nope.
Thank you. And I will now close the public hearing, and we'll now have a public hearing on uses of state revenue sharing for fiscal year 2425, as approved by the Budget Committee. Does any councillor need to declare a potential conflict of interest or recuse themselves regarding these resolutions? I would call on our Finance Director, Jennifer Cuellar, to give a presentation.
So this public hearing is the second public hearing on this topic. The first happened at the Budget Committee, where it, we described the proposed uses of state revenue sharing. This is a statutory requirement for us to be able to draw down on State of Oregon's shared resources, because we are a municipality in a county of greater than 100,000 people living in it. So there will be the public hearing tonight, and then at your final meeting of the fiscal year in two weeks, on June 25th, there will be two further resolutions before you to pass in this process, so.
Thank you. Does any councillor have questions for staff at this time? We will now start to hear public testimony. Has anyone signed up to provide public testimony?
No one has signed up.
Thank you. Would anyone in the gallery like to provide public testimony? Would anyone on Zoom like to provide public testimony? That will conclude our public testimony for the evening. Do councillors have any questions at this time for staff? Not hearing any, I will now close the public hearing. We'll now have a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 24, did I just do that? Yeah, 2425 budget is approved by the Budget Committee. Does any councillor need to declare a potential conflict of interest or recuse themselves regarding these resolutions? I would now call on our Finance Director, Jennifer Cuellar, to give a presentation.
So this is a public hearing regarding the posting of the approved budget that the Budget Committee voted on, I believe it was the 22nd of May, or maybe it was the 23rd. I'm forgetting the dates. And so this is just part of the regular statutory routine that's required. And tonight, we have received between the time of the Budget Committee and this meeting, one item through the Budget Comment web form, and that budget, that comment was included in the, I think, the amended packet. And so it's out there. And also, we do intend to put together a third Q and A write-up, addressing some of the questions that came out at the Budget Committee itself, and I'm going to incorporate some responses to this comment from the public as well. And so tonight, we're just doing the budget hearing on the city's 2024-25 budget, and at your final meeting in June on the 25th, we'll have a resolution at that time. And we also do anticipate there will be some changes from the budget that was approved by the Budget Committee, and that was published in the newspaper, and what you all consider adopting at your final meeting. Most of that driven by some of the suggestions from the Budget Committee itself of things to add in. And also, the insurance issue that came up, that we were projecting increases in insurance that have come in much lower, and we think that is a big enough number that it merits running through, so there'll be some savings off of that that you'll see in the final budget. So that's, that's all I have at this point, unless anyone has any questions, or...
Thank you. Does any councillor have questions for staff at this time?
I do.
Thank you. Councilor Payne?
On page 88 of the packet, the property tax levies, it's, I probably am missing some detail, but there's like a, can I math that? $70,000 drop from this year to next fiscal year, even though the levy rate is going up.
Could you state the page again?
88.
Yeah, I've got the printed version, and so the page number is dropped off. Is it, is it this?
It's a property tax levies chart.
Right.
It starts with statement of changes in activities and sources of financing.
So do you mean the levy for general obligation bonds, that that's going down? Is that the data point you mean?
Oh, yes. Yes.
So that's, that's just for our bonded debt in the levy? And so, some things, we do not pay a flat amount that is the same every year on our debt burden. And also, other factors that can play in on the margins as to variances year to year on that is, if in a current year, you actually collected a tidge more or a tidge less than what you projected, your ending fund balance that rolls into the next year will vary a little bit, and that's part of the calculation that goes into figuring out what the, what the number is we need to meet our debt obligations. But nothing has come off of our debt obligations. The last time that happened was two years ago for the park bond.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Council President?
I don't know if now's the right time, but I just, if City Manager Jeff Towery wanted to speak to Mark Davis's public comment letter, and kind of the free-up of admin time with reducing the FTD from the fire district, and kind of how he spoke to that, just so we could have that...
Yeah, we actually plan to address that issue in the Q and A that Jennifer referenced, and have that for your next council meeting.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions for staff at this time?
I do have one more.
Councilor Payne?
Sorry. It's, it is related to the budget. And just, I want to bring back up the charges for services, the, I don't know what to reference to make it clear what I'm talking about, but it says, quote, "base rate of $13 a month with discounts for low income, 90%, multifamily 25%, assumes 3% increase for calendar year 2025," end quote. This references the city services fee, and I guess I want to know, I want to clarify, because it says assumes 3% increase, I want to know, is that, are we budgeting that, or is that something that's going to come back to the council to be voted on later? I want to understand what that looks like, please.
Yeah. So, so what's in this notice is a summary of the budget document that you all, along with the full Budget Committee, reviewed three-ish weeks ago. So there are no changes from that vote to this summary, you know, unless there was a Scribner's error in there somewhere, and I hope there's not. So included in that, and I think it may have come up, but I can include it in the Q and A if you think it would be helpful to have that written down. What's, what's in the assumptions of the budget is that for calendar year 2025, we're estimating a 3% cost of living increase there, so the last six months have a little bit more money in it. But that's for the budget. In terms of the actuals, you will have an opportunity in the fall where we will look at, how are things going? What is the CPI then? What do you all want to do? And then your vote is what we will do in actual fact. The budget is just a projection of what is, you know, likely-ish to happen.
So just to clarify, currently in the city service fee schedule, there isn't a baked-in 3% cost of living increase on that fee. It's something that we're going to have before us as policymakers in the fall.
Yeah. In the, in the budget, I do estimate a 3% increase starting in January of 2025, so there's a small increase there.
If I remember correctly, the way that it played out, there is an increase unless the council opts not to make an increase. And so last year, we opted not to increase that charge at all, and if I remember correctly, the discussion was in large part about kind of what we were talking about earlier, which is that we're trying to get to full cost recovery with some other things, and so we didn't want to have too many things coming out at once and creating impact, and it wasn't necessary. It wasn't, it wasn't necessary for how we had been administering that. Is that correct?
Yeah. And as I recall, at the time, all of our initial budget projections were based on zero history. And so at that point, we had, you know, a few months of runtime of actuals, and it looked like things were trending to be just a hair over what the projections were when we were putting the fee schedules together. So that's why staff felt comfortable for that year not asking for an increase, because actuals seemed to reflect that it was coming in a little bit higher than what we anticipated when we put the fees together. So that was kind of the thinking on our recommendation. And, sorry, City Manager Towery, did you have?
Okay. Thank you. Any additional questions at this time? All right. We'll now start to hear public testimony. Has anyone signed up in advance to testify?
Mark Davis has signed up.
Thank you. Please join us up here, and remember to state your name and the city in which you live for the record, please.
Thank you, Mayor Drapkin. Members of the council, Mark Davis, 652 Southeast Washington Street here in McMinnville. You have a written comment that I've already submitted. I'm not going to go over that in detail, just to, you know, say that I'm really raising a question here. I don't, you know, I don't have a particular thing I want to say you should or shouldn't do, but I'm asking, you know, what's happened? And with the overhead money or the indirect costs, there's a lot of different ways you can refer to it. I would note that the engineer's presentation about engineering fees today, I don't know if you've looked at when the example he had there, he had one line where you were adding in indirect management and administration costs to the fee. So this is something I know that goes on, you know, exactly where the money that was going to, was being charged to the fire department went, I don't know, and I just, you know, I'm kind of asking that question, so. Beyond that, I mean, it's clear the city has unmet needs, and, you know, you've been struggling with trying to figure out revenue sources and, you know, trying to meet those needs. The city did a study establishing base levels, I think was a good study. I mean, it showed that we needed to make investments in certain areas. What I sort of feel has not been done is taking a look at who's going to be paying to increase city services to the base level. In other words, we have a lot of citizens in this community who are not at base level as far as income goes, and when we're using things like the city services fee to increase revenues to pay for that, I just don't think it's a, it's a fair way to look at things. And I also think we need to acknowledge that McMinnville is not a wealthy community. I took a quick look at some census data. McMinnville now, according to the census data, has a median income of $65,318. Yarmil County's at $80,000, so we're not even, you know, the State of Oregon is at $76,000 something. And I looked at a series of cities, Tuolleton, Oregon City, Newburgh, Kaiser, Dallas, Woodburn, for a range, and basically the only city below us in that, that group is Woodburn. It goes from $105,000 in Tuolleton to about $58,000, $59,000 in Woodburn. So I think we really need to take a careful look at what the income level is of the people in this community before we're asking the lower, the people with less income to be contributing more to bring city services up to base level, because they're simply not at base level right now as far as their income level. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Does any councillor need any...
Does any counselor need anything clarified regarding the testimony of the speaker? All right, thank you. Has, has anyone else signed up to testify?
No one else has signed up.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to provide testimony this evening? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to provide testimony this evening? I will now close the public testimony. Does staff have anything that they'd like to add to the record?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Does council have anything additional to add at this time? Okay, I will now close the public hearing. We'll now go to advice and information items from counselors. I'll start with you, Counselor Chenoweth. And as you get unmuted and your screen on, I will say that although out of rotation, I have asked Counselor Chenoweth to add the Midwell Amit Valley Area Commission on Transportation to his council assignments. And so he did attend that for the first time this, this past week. And I'll turn it over to you, Counselor.
Yeah, and that's the only meeting I would be reporting on, only it was kind of a grasp for me to catch up with where we're at in that committee. So I really don't have an effective report to give. Next month, I will be more prepared.
Thank you. And Counselor Payne?
My committees have not met.
Thank you. Counselor Menke?
There is no YCAP or affordable housing meeting this month.
Thank you, Counselor Gary.
Okay, MIRAC, you all just joined us for our meeting, so you heard it here first. DEIAC will be meeting this Thursday. We'll continue the assessment work and actually hear the first big phase of report out from that live. So that'll be an interesting one to read through and, and get after the consultants have worked through many conversations with city staff. Third Street Improvement Project, my notes are, we heard from the consultant team at SIRA and the folks they put together on a bevy of items, including material selection for the actual roadway. So the roadway itself, the drivable surface, the recommendation is concrete. We heard the pros and cons of that versus asphalt. Crosswalks being raised, the, the element of crosswalks across the road being raised to match sidewalk elevation. So to make room, make considerations for multimodal, the sidewalk and the crosswalks would be the same plane. And the long apron and approach would, the road would take a long apron and approach to come up to meet that. Materials, material selection at sort of what tangential areas, so, you know, planting strips or parking medians and areas between sidewalks and bulbouts, what are those materials? Pavers, come more concrete, things like that. How did he phrase it? Percentage inclusion throughout the downtown streetscape of art and eccentric elements. So a small percentage of little fun things, medium percentage of little fun things, or big percentage of little fun things. And I advocated for a big percentage of big fun things. Tree preservation survey results, so you may have read the headline, but to reiterate, we, we heard from our arborist consultant and the tree health, current to date, results are, of the 145 trees downtown on Third Street, 22 are intended for preservation, 28 need to be removed for compromised health, 58 need to be removed due to lifted roots, 27 need to be removed due to critical, critical infrastructure conflicts, and 10 need to be removed due to agency standards. So that's the report out of the trees. And the total estimated project cost so far as drawn at this phase is, at this stage in the game, is 21 and a half to 24 million. But Public Works Director Hunsicker feels optimistic about grants, being able to feel, be right in the sweet spot to achieve some grants to, to fund that project.
Do you know what agency standards are?
Oh, water and light, pro-wag, I mean, Jeff, you could, you could fill in with a little more, but, but power, water, infrastructure, the governing agencies that just have sort of, you can't have a pipe within this or a tree within this or those types of things in conflict with that, or sightlines at intersections, things like that.
Thank you. I got it. Yeah.
No, I got it.
You got it. You nailed it. Thank you.
That's the, that's that. And I added one to my responsibilities for the city as well. The, on Saturday afternoon, the Parks and Rec team I coached, the Navy Yankees, won their first game of the year at the seven-year-old level, their first year they're pitching to themselves. And it was a great game on a nice, warm day, beautiful park, and we won.
Very, very good. Very good. Thank you. Council President?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd just like to thank everybody that attended City Fair and State of the City by the mayor was great. And thank you for all the staff that engaged in that. And it was an honor to present State of the District. For the Fire District, we had our first budget meeting last Monday. The third, we'll have another budget meeting this Thursday, the 13th, starting with an executive session at 1800 and should be out of that around 1830. YCOM voted today for the proposed 12% fee increase, and that was to stabilize our ending fund balance as well as offset fee increases likely in the high teens or low twenties in the upcoming years. And so it was of the YCOM's budget committee directive at our last meeting to try and even that out as, as much as possible, even though it's about double to quadruple what we're kind of expecting. Typically, we see a 3% to 6% increase, as well as Director Patty Sowers gave us a briefing on kind of what a swatting incident like at the high school today does for her division at, at YCOM and kind of what that does to dispatchers. And I'll leave that there and let police talk to that a little bit more in their report. As far as airport goes, I'll refer to your packet on that. We have a resolution tonight. And our airport manager, airport, not manager, administrator, Willie will present that. And visiting McMinnville, I saw Jeff off in true townie fashion last Friday and had a drink with him at the Blue Moon on his last day.
Excellent. Thank you. And in the hopes of keeping us, or getting us out of here by 2200, I will keep my report relatively brief. I had the honor of attending both Linfield and McMinnville High School graduations and attending the groundbreaking for MV advancements. And then I will just continue a little bit of what Council President said. I just want to very specifically acknowledge and thank Claudia Sisneros and Daniel Ruiz and Noelle Amaya for the amazing job that they did putting a large-scale, broad, incredible community fair together. And I'm going to give us some quick examples of things that happened because of that. Number one, we had a person roll up to the Fire District booth on their bicycle, take their helmet off, and said, "Hi, my name is," fill in the blank. I, I remember it, but I'll leave it out for the sake of priority here. "And I was a combat medic and I would like to volunteer with you." Thing number two was somebody came up to the library booth and said that they had wanted to join the Makalalees, that's the McMinnville Ukulele Group that plays. And so they were going to go buy a ukulele, but then, so they could join, but then they learned that our library of things, they could get a ukulele, so they got a ukulele. And then they went to the Makalalees and then they realized they do not want to learn how to play a ukulele. And so they thanked our library director for saving them the money they would have spent on that instrument that then they would have put back out into a system. Similarly, and perhaps a little bit sweet, on the, on the same booth, the sewing machine was out as a display of the types of things you could get from the library. And a parent and child walked by and said something about you could win this. And so our library director said, "No, actually, this is a demonstration of things you can get from us." And the parent turned to the child and said, "Well, this is so great. You've outgrown your little sewing machine and you've been wanting a new one, so we can do that for you now." So I just think that those are really fantastic things that came out of it. And then also, all of our departments, with the assistance of our incredible team, got super involved in community activities and especially youth, youth engagement. And so these came out of our planning department. This is a McMinnville scavenger hunt. And I hope everybody takes, takes one home and shares them with the kids. And I meant to put them up there before I got up here, but I forgot about it, so I'll, I'll run them over there in a moment. So just thank you for everybody for that incredible contribution. I'm still wearing my I Love Mac Swifty bracelet from Planning as well. So we loved all of that. And then I also just separately want to thank Evergreen Museum for hosting a really moving and impactful and beautiful D-Day memorial. I was honored to speak there, along with representatives from our district, our state, and federal government. And it was, it was, it was a really, it was a very moving ceremony. And I just really want to sincerely thank them for bringing that to our community. We'll now go to department head reports. City Manager Towery?
Thank you, Mayor. One item, tomorrow I will share with you an inspiration, some pictures of the council chambers in Bruges, Belgium.
Thank you. City Attorney David Lightenberg?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing from the legal department tonight.
Thank you. Community Development Director Heather Richards?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thanks for talking about our scavenger hunt. We have it available for all youth in the community and encourage people to participate. You can bring the scavenger hunt into the Community Development Center and choose a prize from our treasure chest. We have a variety of different planning games, Plan Your Own City types of games for different age groups in our community. So love to see people participate in that. And we have lots more of our I Heart Mac bracelets to give away, so our team loves to do that as well. I wanted to let people know that there's two opportunities to volunteer and participate in making meaningful impact in our community and help us plan the future. We have a position open on the McMinnville Urban Renewal Advisory Committee, so we'll get out and advertise that here. Anybody who's interested in that, that's helping make decisions about our urban renewal area, which is the downtown and the northeast Gateway District. And then we also have opportunities for people to participate on a project advisory committee. So this is a standing committee that has a timeframe of about 18 months to work with us on putting together a recommendation for a housing production strategy for city council to consider. People who are interested in brainstorming tools to add to the city toolbox to help offset the cost of housing needs in our community, this is the place to be. We're going to be spending a lot of time over the next 12 months, meeting monthly and having those discussions. So if you're interested, contact the Community Development Department for either of those opportunities.
Thank you. And also, thank you for not walloping me when I took a handful of jelly beans out of the how many jelly beans are in this jar, jar. Captain Fessler?
I don't have anything specific in regards to the overall police department, but I do want to take the public opportunity to say, I mean, we don't often have normal days, I guess, in our profession. And today was not really a normal day for us, but I just wanted to touch on, just briefly, the incident at the high school. Publicly thank our staff who responded. You know, just to, I won't go into the, the specific details, but, you know, we had staff inside that building within a minute. I think that's noteworthy. I want to thank the high school staff. They care for a large number of the children in the community, and they were right on point. I think that's important to mention. I want to thank the students. You know, oftentimes, there's, there's a lot of misinformation and things, but I think they performed well following the guidance of the staff. And parents, we can't ever, ever be in front of the messaging that gets out. So I can totally appreciate what parents might think as the information leaks out. And we're trying our best to, to sort of provide guidance and, and information as quickly as we can. But all in all, it turned out as well as it could be. I need to publicly thank our sheriff's office staff who responded immediately and our cohorts up in Newburgh Dundee who were calling, asking, do they need to head down here? So just want to say thanks publicly to all those folks, so.
Thank you very much. I'll go to our city recorder team next. Daniel Ruiz?
Yeah, just a reminder that we have a joint, special joint city council and McMinnville School Board work session on Monday, the 17th of June at 6:00 PM here at Civic Hall. And the meeting that is generally scheduled for Wednesdays, which will be the 19th, will be canceled as it is a holiday and the city offices will be closed.
Thank you. And there is a packet for that joint meeting as well. Claudia Sisneros, anything from you? Public Works Director Jeff Hunsicker?
Yeah, I just wanted to recognize our stormwater PAC that is continuing to volunteer their time and is now the Stormwater and Wastewater PAC. They met last week to hear about the wastewater conveyance and treatment plan that we're working on and got a tour of the wastewater reclamation facility, which if you've never been, is fantastic.
Very cool. Finance Director Jennifer Quayar?
Yeah, just want to note a couple of things. So it's that time of year and our auditors will be primarily virtually doing their interim testing for the fiscal year that's closing on June 30, the last week of June. So we're prepping for that and it's coming up soon. We also, the muni court group has invested a good amount of time into a grant application that was discussed a little bit at the budget committee meeting. And it is a competitive grant process, but it's, it's for a substantial amount. It's a $1.2 million grant that would cover four years of work. So we're, we're putting together a proposal that would allow us to move forward community court work in town. And one of the key elements to being able to do that is investing in a new court management software system and implementing that. So we'll see. There are only nine of these awarded nationwide, so it's, you know, somewhat uncertain, but we'll see. And then just on a personal note, I'll be out most of the month of July, and we are planning for that inside of our team and shouldn't be any difficulties. But if you have any questions or concerns during that period of time, Rhonda Gretson is the number two in our office, and she, she would be the first person to contact if you thought you wanted to reach out to me for any reason.
Thank you.
That's my report.
Captain, do you have anything you want to add to the police report? No? Okay, thank you. IT, oh, yes, Captain?
Thank you. Speaking of other partners, I apologize, McMinnville Fire District, we appreciate your help today as well. Unsung heroes. And YCOM was mentioned. And it is a, is it, it is a big task to take on all the incoming calls and stuff that comes, so apologize for not mentioning.
Thank you. IT Director Burke? Parks and Rec Director Muir? Thank you. As everybody had an opportunity to review the March and April 24 Cash and Investment Report, and does anyone have any questions? Take that silence as a yes and a no. We are going to actually break our consent agenda and not have it as a consent agenda. We're going to take it one at a time. And I'm going to start with Item C, which is a consideration to, for a waiver of the noise ordinance. And does any counselor need to remove themselves from hearing this item? No? In that case, would you like to come up and tell us just a little bit about this noise ordinance waiver that you're requesting?
I'm Angela Darrow. This is David Clausen.
Hello.
And we live just down the street, 414 Southeast Davis. Mayor Drapkin and Council President Garvin. I'm glad to be here with all of you tonight. And I'm a little flustered because two of your members are alumni from the high school and I got to be their teacher. once upon a time. And it's really great to see you in action. So thank you for all you do for our community. I really appreciate it. We are, we're getting married, and we're having our wedding reception known as the Mighty Union Jamboree on July 7 in our yard. It will begin around 6 o'clock that evening, and we are intending to call it a night around 10. We are featuring some of our friends' bands, and so we know that we will have a more musical Sunday night than our neighbors are aware of. So I wanted to say thank you to Claudia Sisneros. She helped us make our appearance here tonight. And we are requesting a variance to the noise. Is it a noise ordinance?
Thank you. I would accept a motion to approve the waiver?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
First, congratulations.
Thank you.
I think we all agree on the congratulations. We can do a motion if you need one. But I wonder if there is something relevant to parking, as I travel down Davis on the way home, as do other members of the council. And so I'm just curious if parking has been arranged, because it is relevant to noise.
Yeah, we are hoping to make use of the free parking by the First Baptist and Presbyterian Church. And because we're a block from there, or two blocks from there.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I would now accept a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Council President Garvin, a second from Counselor Geary. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say nay. And congratulations, and have a great wedding.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll now consider the request from 1109 Lafayette Bar for new outlet commercial OLCC liquor license located at 1109 Northeast Lafayette Avenue. Does any counselor need to recuse themselves from this agenda item? I would, does anyone have any questions? I would accept a motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second. Thank you. I have a motion from Counselor Geary, a second from Counselor Manke. This is Item B on the consent. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And then those opposed, say nay. Great, motion passes unanimously. I'm now ask Council President to take on Item A. I do have a conflict. I do business through my winery with the applicant.
All right, we'll now consider the request from Labor Wines LLC for a winery permanent location, OLCC liquor license located at 2803 Northeast Orchard Avenue. And I'll ask for a motion to approve consent, the consent agenda item Mayor Drabkin recused herself on.
So moved.
And a second. So we have a motion by Counselor Geary and a second by Counselor Manke. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously, five to zero.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Okay, and we are into resolutions. We're now going to consider Resolution Number 2024-30, a resolution approving the award of a professional services contract to Century West Engineering Corporation for on-call airport engineering consultant services. And I would like to call on Willie Williamson, our airport administrator, to present.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor Drabkin, city council members. There we go. Push that thing. So we selected Century West Engineering to go forward and request your approval. And a little background, the FAA requires a consultant for all projects that are grant-funded. And it's an industry standard to have a five-year contract with the engineering consultant firm, you know, to be readily available to assist in all aspects of grant-funded projects. They can also provide assistance with lower-level engineering activities that are not grant-funded. And, you know, stuff like what we did a year ago, which was restripe runway 1735 in the taxiways, which was kind of, it was too small of a project to get grant funding for. So we were able to use the engineering consultant to do that project. And let's see, I don't know. I'm not real good at this. But anyway, Century West Engineering has, they've got over 20 years' experience working here with City of McMinnville and the McMinnville Airport. They've done the 2004 master plan and airport layout plan, a bunch of engineering projects throughout the last 20 years. And they are presently doing the airport master plan update. And at the same time, you know, different section of the company doing the environmental floor, the airport fencing and wind cone project. And that project's going to dovetail into the actual fencing, design and construction project that should start up in a couple months. I don't know what else to say about it. It's a simple engineering contract.
Thank you.
You know, I'm sorry, go ahead.
If you have nothing else, then that suffices.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for our airport manager this time? Administrator? Okay. Not hearing any. I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-30.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion from Counselor Geary, a second from Counselor Payne. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say nay. And the resolution has passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here, Mr. Williamson. And I'm sorry I didn't call on you during Department Head Reports.
Oh, that's fine. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We'll now consider Resolution Number 2024-31, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year 2324 and making contingency transfers and repealing Resolution Number 2024-29. I'll call on Jennifer Quayar, our Finance Director, to present.
So this is the resolution associated with one of the public hearings that you had earlier this evening, where I described the errors involved. And so we are repealing the resolution that was made two, three weeks ago, at your last meeting, and substituting with this so that all of the facts are exactly right this time. So I submit it for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Any council discussion? Not hearing any. I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-31.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Counselor Manke and a second from Counselor Geary. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, say nay. The resolution has passed unanimously. Thank you very much. We'll now consider Resolution Number 2024-32, a resolution authorizing amendments to interfund loans from the Wastewater Capital Fund to the General Fund for Capital Investments authorized by the council in June 2023. And I'll call on our Finance Director, Jennifer Quayar, to present.
So the resolution before you formalizes one of the details that was discussed at the Budget Committee meetings in May. But there was, for work happening at the Community Development Center building, they were able to do more, accomplished more with the same budget that had been approved last year for internal borrowing. But I wanted to formally expand the scope of the borrowing to make it just crystal clear what the funds were for. So this resolution does that. And in addition, because the largest items that were included in last year's internal borrowing were for the building, you may recall, of two loos, kind of alternative to stick-built restrooms in parks. A judgment was made subsequent to that being included in the budget that actually, we've tried out having security services in the evenings in our park system, and that really has dramatically impacted the issues that folks were seeing in the bathrooms, which was the reason for wanting to try this new restroom-style building. So we will formally remove that. And it was, both of them, it was a total of $540,000 in internal borrowing capacity that you all authorized last year, and just formally say, we don't need it. So this resolution does those two things.
Thank you. Any council discussion or questions? All right, thank you. I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-31.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion from Counselor Manke and a second from Counselor Geary. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say nay. The resolution has passed unanimously. We'll now consider Resolution Number 2024-32, a resolution authorizing amendments to interfund loans from, no?
We just.
I just did that. So when I asked for the motion last time, I stated the wrong resolution. I, as we completed, I asked for a resolution on 24-31. So would you like me to redo the motion since I, or is stating now that I stated the number incorrectly sufficient?
It would be nice to do it with the corrected number really quickly.
Thank you. I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-32.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion from Counselor Manke and a second from Counselor Geary. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed, say nay. And the resolution has passed unanimously. We'll now consider the first reading with a possible second reading of Ordinance Number 5146. Does any counselor need to declare an actual or potential conflict of interest or recuse themselves regarding this ordinance?
Is this dealing with, yeah, the change from R1 to R4? I do have a next parter contact that I want to declare.
Okay.
I've spoken at two Rotary meetings with Denise Murphy. She just bubbles up about this information. And I just, unfortunately, I had no choice but to listen. It's not going to affect how I will vote, but I want to declare these.
Thank you. Thank you for the declaration. Council Payne?
She emailed me on 5/21, and I responded on 5/22.
Okay, can you please forward those to?
Done.
Thank you.
And for the record, tonight, you are considering the Planning Commission recommendation and the record that's associated with that. We have not entered these other contacts into the record unless you choose to open the public hearing and solicit more record. The counselors who did receive these or had the contact just need to state that it won't impact their decision tonight. Their decision will be based on the existing public record in front of them.
Absolutely.
Correct.
I got that same email, but chose not to respond, and it won't affect my decision.
I'm with you. I agree.
Okay, thank you. We will now consider the matter of Ordinance Number 5146. Does any counselor object to having the ordinance read by title only? Will our City Attorney David Lightenberg please read the ordinance by title only?
This is the first reading of Ordinance Number 5146. An ordinance approving a zone change from R1 low-density, 9,000-square-feet lot residential zone to R4 medium-high-density, 5,000-square-feet lot residential zone, a property of approximately one acre located at 2125 Northwest Second Street, tax lot R4419AC00300, docket ZC1-24.
Thank you. I would now call on Heather Richards, our Community Development Director, to present.
Yes, thank you. I do not see Evan Hipps on the Zoom. I just want to make sure he's not there. I'm going to present for him. He is our new associate housing planner, and he was hoping to be able to do this presentation for you tonight. But we had an agreement. He's driving to Seattle this evening to catch a flight tomorrow to go to England for his wedding. So I said, don't stay on too late. Let's get on the road. And I can do this for you. So bear with me. I'm going to read the script he's provided to me, and Claudia and I will coordinate on the presentation. So tonight, we are looking at docket CZ1-24. It is a zone change application. It was reviewed by the Planning Commission, and they hosted the first evidentiary public hearing and voted to recommend approval to you tonight. And so we'll go through what the actual project is, and then the discussion that happened at the Planning Commission level, and then your options that are in front of you. So for the next slide, please. The zone change application is for a property located at 2125 Northwest Second Street. Next slide. This property is approximately one acre in size and has access off of Second Street. It's near the intersection of Second Street and Hill Road on the western side of the city. Next slide. The applicant and property owner submitted a zone change application to the Community Development Department on March 7, 2024, requesting a zone map amendment from the R1 zone to the R4 zone. Next slide. So the subject property is currently zoned R1, and the applicant is proposing, the owner is proposing to change it to the R4 zoning destination to allow the property to be used for uses and densities which are permitted in the R4 zone, so housing. The R1 zone allows a wide range of residential uses and requires a minimum lot size of 9,000 square feet. So with our recent amendments to our residential zoning codes, in the R1 zone, you can build up to a fourplex on any buildable lot, as well as a cottage cluster up to eight units. But the distinction is that the minimum lot size is 9,000 square feet. The R4 zone allows similar uses to the R1 zone, but also allows apartments or large, single-resident occupancy developments. And it requires a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet for those products that are single-family to fourplexes, or it can build the apartment complex on the full-acre development. The application, though, is just for the zone change, so we did not receive a development project with the application itself. Next slide, please. So in the city of McMinnville and in the state of Oregon, quite frankly, an applicant, a property owner can apply for a zone change alone. And there is zone change review criteria. For McMinnville, it's in our code. It's 17.74.020. There's a three-part test in terms of reviewing a zone change application. The three-part test is that the proposed amendment is consistent with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan, that the proposed amendment is orderly and timely, considering the pattern of development in the area, surrounding land uses, and any changes which may have occurred in the neighborhood or community to warrant the proposed amendment. And utilities and services can be efficiently provided to serve the proposed uses or other potential uses in the proposed zoning district. You'll find in your packet the decision document with the findings that the Planning Commission voted on to recommend to you, showing that the application does meet this review criteria. It is adjacent to other R4-zoned land. It has access from a minor arterial in our community, and it's providing needed housing per our housing needs analysis. Utilities and services have been reviewed in terms of being able to support the zone change application as well. Next slide. So a public hearing was held at the Planning Commission on May 16 as required for a zone change application. The Planning Commission had three questions prior to the public hearing, which were addressed by staff in a memo that was sent to the Planning Commission and the applicant on May 15. At the public hearing, there was testimony provided by five people on various topics. Three people spoke in support of the application, and two people expressed concerns with the proposed rezone, however, they did not explicitly oppose the application itself. The concerns focused on traffic impacts and building heights. The concerns focused on traffic impacts and building heights. It's worth noting that in the R1 zone, the maximum building height is 35 feet, and the R4 zone allows a maximum building height of 60 feet. But it's also worth noting that this property has R4-zoned land to the north of it, as well as to the east of it. Following the public hearing, the Planning Commission discussed the proposal and had a few questions and comments on two primary topics. One of the topics was a concern that there wasn't a future proposed development provided with the zone change application. So, what I have discovered in my time in McMinnville is that people like to vote on land use applications with a really specific site plan and development plan, and then have that be adopted into the zone change as sort of the adopted plan for that property, so very specific development requirements. That's not required. It's not required by, we can't by state law require it for a zone change, and we don't require it in our local code. So, we had that discussion with the applicant. They would like to just apply for the zone change itself and then have the flexibility to think about what type of development made the most sense on the R4-zoned land.
Up mic.
It's also important to note that each zone has its permitted land uses structured in such a way so that all those land uses are allowed in that zone moving forward, and that they can be compatible with one another and consistent with the purpose of the zoning district. There was also a discussion on traffic impacts and the review process associated with that, and I'll talk a little bit more about that with the next slide. And then there was a discussion on sanitary sewer. We have, in the past, identified a pinch point for this property in terms of being able to develop it, pinch point for high-density development along Second Street in this area. And so, we did go back to our model for sanitary sewer, which has been updated recently with our wastewater public facility update and reviewed it relative to this rezone. And based on that review, it was determined that there was enough sanitary sewer to support the rezone. Next slide, please. So, in terms of traffic, we've had a lot of discussion about traffic impacts and our requirements relative to applications providing a traffic impact analysis and when they provide it and how we review it. So, a traffic impact analysis is provided when you do a comprehensive plan map amendment. So, if you're, if there was an interest in changing the comprehensive plan designation from residential to commercial, that would need to go through what's called a transportation planning rule analysis to demonstrate that that sort of change in comprehensive plan designation can be supported, and it's based on all the uses allowed in that comprehensive plan designation. So, it much, if you remember the three-mile lane discussion, we talked about sort of those broad categories. So, this already has a residential comprehensive plan designation on it. So, it's already been identified as being residential, and it's been, the systems have been planned to support that broadly. Then, when we look at a zone change, we're looking at the size of the zone change relative to the traffic impact that would be associated with it, to see if a traffic impact analysis is required with that zone change itself, because it's, it's all sort of relative to the amount of change in traffic impact in our system. A 1-acre zone change did not, from, from the R1 to the R4 zone, based on the fact that all that missing middle housing products allowed in the R1 zone, did not, did not meet that threshold of change in terms of what could occur on the R4 property under, with an acre's worth of property. Now, based on that, if, what we can do is if they come in for a development project, let's say they come in for a development project which looks at the 1-acre property and builds out at the 60-foot height maximum for multifamily development, we can, at that time, require a traffic impact analysis if we choose to do so. So, taking the highest use, and if it comes in at the highest use, we could require it at that time.
To clarify that, Heather, "we" as in you, the planning director, or "we" as in council?
"We" as in the planning director has that ability to require that as part of the building permits, the middle.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Council Gary?
So, could I, I clarify. What I heard you say is that there is no transportation impact analysis required at this point.
Right.
Then, can you clarify what is provided in terms of a trans, trip generation? It's a trip generation?
Yeah. So, they chose to provide the trip generation report as part of their application. We did not require it as part of our zone change requirements, but they did choose to provide that. Now, by providing that, what it does is it, we, we have, we don't have a policy at the city of McMinnville that says traffic impact analysis is required when the trip generation report shows that the differential of trip generation exceeds 50 trips, whatever it is. Pick a number, right? A lot of cities have that. They have baked, put into their code, if the trip generation report, you have to do a trip generation report. If it shows that the additional trips is this much, then you're going to do a traffic impact analysis that will show how those trips impact the intersections around it. We don't have any policy like that in either direction, either to require the trip generation report or the traffic impact analysis. We do have an internal policy that we've used at times with planned developments when we can require more than what's asked for in the code, because the planned development says, "We want some relaxation on your standards for X, Y, and Z, because we're going to do A, B, and C." Because of that request, we can ask for additional information. So, often, you'll see with planned developments, we do require a traffic impact analysis. We've done that for Baker Creek North. We did that for Oak Ridge Meadows, the planned development amendment. We did that for, I think, Baker Creek East, but we don't have the authority to require it.
Yeah. I was just trying to get what they, what I was reading here, so that makes...
Yeah. Yeah. They provide, I mean, it's, it's a fairly standard product, so they provided that anyways, the trip generation report. And what it did for us is it reassured us that we didn't actually need it, because it didn't, it didn't show the, the extent of that much more trip generation that's going to impact the system as a whole, if that makes sense. So, after that discussion, the, the Planning Commission, following the staff's, if, we can go to the next slide, please. So, following the staff's presentation, the applicant's response, and the public testimony, the Planning Commission did vote to recommend approval of this zone change to you as the city council. They voted unanimously for that. Next slide. So, in front of you, you have four actions that you can take tonight. They would include, and this is based on our code and how we bring the Planning Commission recommendations to you. You can adopt Ordinance Number 5146. That adopts the decision document that Planning Commission is recommending to you with the findings associated with it, and that would approve the land use decision. You can adopt Ordinance Number 5146 with amendments. So, you could make amendments to the decision documents. You could say, "I would like to amend this finding by saying, stating X," or, "I would like to add this condition of approval for the following reasons with this finding." If it's not substantive amendment, you can do that through just a voting process by adopting Ordinance Number 5146 with amendments. You can call for a public hearing at the city council level and say, "You know what? We think we need to open this up for a public hearing and bring in more, allow for more testimony and more public record before we make a decision." And you can choose to not adopt the ordinance. By not adopting the ordinance, you are essentially denying the application, and you would need to provide findings for that as well. Staff is recommending approval of Ordinance Number 5146, consistent with the Planning Commission's recommendation and the decision document and conclusionary findings that you have in front of you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff at this time? Council Gary, I think you had another? No? You're satisfied? Any additional counsel president?
Yeah. Heather, thanks for the presentation. Has there been other rezones of this property? I know it speaks to it currently being an R1 property, and it had a single-family dwelling on it previous, but it seems like we've rezoned this property or some property on West Second in the last 10 years?
1915.
Gentle.
Yeah.
Yes.
It was 1915.
Gotcha. And then you spoke to the sewer capacity. Is that capacity, if it's 60-foot-tall apartment building at full buildout?
So, when, when doing a zone change, you cannot make a decision of denial based on the worst-case scenario for the zone change. It has to be based on sort of the, the moderation of what that zone change could allow. When they come in for a development permit, if they come in for a development permit and the engineering team is concerned that there isn't sewer capacity to support the 60-foot-tall multifamily development, and let's pretend we give them lots of parking variances, and so they actually, they're covering more of the land, then they can ask them to do a sewer study to support their, their building permit.
Okay. And do we have to take into account, like, the lack of commercial services in that quadrant out there if we're going to be bringing that much more housing in?
No. So, if you look at the findings document, our comprehensive plan policy has policies about proximity to commercial services, to a park, to some other things. It has this sort of standardization. What the, the commercial product, even though there's a lot of office space involved in it, but the commercial product at the intersection of Second and Hill Road meets that standard of proximity.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Not seeing any.
Make a motion to approve Ordinance Number 5146?
Thank you. I have a motion from Council Payne to, technically, the motion needs to be to accept the first reading of Ordinance Number 5146 and...
So moved.
Thank you. I have a motion from Council Payne and a second from Council Mankey. All those in favor, please signify by...
We do discussion on...
We just did it.
Oh.
We were doing questions.
Oh.
Yeah.
Zach wanted to do discussion.
Oh. I got you.
Sorry.
Yeah. No problem. We can have discussion. Go for it.
Thank you.
Do you mind withdrawing your motion?
I'm going to withdraw my motions.
Thank you.
So, I understand the sort of, don't have to have a plan to be binding for the zone change. That makes sense. But we do have a plan that indicates something. Can you tell me a little bit about what I'm seeing on page 162, the, the proposed plan?
Yeah. And if you read their narrative, they actually say that's not their proposed plan. And so, you always love it when applicants bring in confusing information that we then need to...
Right. So, yeah.
So...
Process and including a plan for, that's not a proposed plan.
Yes. That's right. So, in discussion with them, this is not their proposed plan. They've, they've have visited with us for what they want to achieve on that property. This plan, we've looked at it, and we have, but we haven't looked at it, you know, with any sort of close look, so to speak. So, I don't know if it even meets our standards or doesn't meet our standards. But I think what they're, what they're trying to do is put duplexes or fourplexes up there, so not a 60-foot-tall building.
Duplexes or fourplexes? Okay. So, don't pay attention to the plan.
That's, these...
Included in the packet.
That's right.
Pay no attention.
Yes. Which has created confusion for both neighbors and the Planning Commission. So, my note to applicants, if it's not part of your application, don't include it in the application.
The advice is free, sir. Additional discussion?
None from me.
Thank you. I would, any additional discussion?
I'm curious if Counsel Chenoweth is still online, if he...
He is, and I'm watching.
I am still online, and I'm listening.
There you go. Quite the team over here.
Make sure that he felt heard and that I didn't motion over...
He and I are both making sure.
Somebody, I don't want to motion over somebody again.
Thank you. So, I would now ask for a motion to accept the first reading of Ordinance Number 5146 and possibly passing it to a second reading.
So moved. I'll get...
Second.
And I have a motion from Council Payne and a second from Council Mankey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, say nay. The motion has passed unanimously, and Ordinance Number 5146 passes to its second reading. I will ask the city attorney, David Leitenberg, to read the ordinance again by title only.
This is the second reading of Ordinance Number 5146. An ordinance approving a zone change from R1 low-density, 9,000-square-feet-lot residential zone to R4 medium-high-density, 5,000-square-feet-lot residential zone for property of approximately 1 acre located at 2125 Northwest Second Street, tax lot R4419AC00300, docket ZC1-24.
Thank you. I'd ask for a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 5146.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Council Payne and a second from Council Mankey. I will ask our deputy city recorder to poll the council.
Council Gary?
Aye.
Council Mankey?
Aye.
Counsel Chenoweth?
Aye.
Counsel Payne?
Aye.
Council President Garvin?
Aye.
The motion has, the Ordinance Number 5146 has been adopted unanimously, and I will now adjourn the city council meeting at 9:46 PM, and I will call to order the meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency meeting of June 11, 2024. And we will start with a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2425 urban renewal budget as approved, as approved by the Budget Committee. And I would again ask our Finance Director, Jennifer Quayar, to present information on the 2425 URA budget hearing.
Good evening. So, the, the Budget Committee approved the urban renewal budget at its meeting on May 22nd, and the summary of that budget was published in the News Register, and we have received no public comments on that budget through the, the budget comment portal on the website. And this is the opportunity for folks from the community to come and weigh in on that budget and for you all to take its comment. And then later on this evening, you will actually be considering the resolution to adopt that budget.
Thank you. Is there any public comment that, I heard that none has been already signed up for? Would anyone in the gallery or on Zoom like to provide public comment? Any questions for staff? I would now close the public hearing, and we will now consider Resolution Number 2024-03, a resolution adopting the budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, making appropriations and declaring the tax increment. And I'll call on our Finance Director, Jennifer Quayar, to present. Should have been up here at this table tonight, you know?
I, I picked the wrong spot.
Yeah.
So, so the budget that is before you for adoption, formally for next fiscal year for the Urban Renewal Agency, has not been changed from what was approved at the Budget Committee. So, I don't have any further notes or, or additions or comments beyond what was discussed then, but I'm happy to take any questions or what have you. But the, I believe you've got a script that shows exactly what the numbers need to be and the wording so that we get the, the appropriation done properly, both on the amounts, but also for the taxes.
Thank you. Any council discussion? All right. I will now ask for a motion to adopt the fiscal year 202425 budget to make appropriations and declare the tax increment for the McMinnville Urban Renewal Plan area.
So moved.
I have a motion from Council Payne.
Second.
And a second from Council Mankey to adopt Resolution Number 2024-03, adopting the 202425 budget in the amount of $2,997,888 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, to make appropriations in the amount of $2,686,000, uh, 2, 2,686,000... to make appropriations in the amount of $2,686,000, uh, two, $2,686,062, and to certify the, to the county assessor a request for the McMinnville Urban Renewal Plan area for the maximum, maximum amount of revenue that may be raised by dividing the taxes under Section 1C, Article 9 of the Oregon Constitution and ORS Chapter 457. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, say nay. And the resolution has passed unanimously, and we'll now consider Resolution Number 2024-04, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year 2324, making a contingency transfer. I will call on Jennifer Quayre, Finance Director, to present.
So this is an action that amends the current year budget of FY 2324, and it is for a small amount. It's for $7,044. And what this is, is the match amount for the grant that Heather Richards, our planning, our Community Development Director, mentioned during the MURAC meeting earlier this evening. The grants that we got to offset the cost of doing the, the environmental surveys at the RB or Northwest Rubber Property. So there's a, there's a small grant match, and because that is a transfer, there just isn't any wiggle room on that budget, so that's why we have to formally do that category. So that's all I have. Happy to take questions.
Thank you. Any council discussion or questions? I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-04.
Everybody run for your mics. So moved.
Thank you. I have a motion from Counselor Payne and a second from Counselor Manke. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say nay. And the resolution has passed unanimously, and I will now adjourn this Urban Renewal Agency meeting at 9:52 PM, also known as 21, 21:52.
Eight minutes early.
Woo woo!
Thank you all. Good night.